Even though it is an open meeting.
Yeah, good luck with that, Mayor.
Yeah. All right. Good evening and welcome to the City Council's special meeting of Tuesday, August 8th, 2023. Two items on the agenda. The first of those is discussion regarding the city's school resource officer program. Who do we have, Chief?
Are you leaving the discussion?
Yeah, I can't. The, uh... What I have so far, I mean, I haven't been in a lot of meetings, but is that county has stepped up to provide some officers for the elementary schools. How, how that is done, I'm not sure what the ideas are there, but they, uh, they have offered, and that'd be a good thing unless until, you know, we can finish staffing up to the 13 or whatever's decided by the council to do with our program and our side of it. So I don't know a lot about the discussions of what has happened.
I can fill them in on that if you want. Well, we just, we had a discussion, started a discussion with Norman Public Schools as to what would it take to get a school resource officer in every school and, and to make sure that our kids are safe when they go to school? Just a simple question like that. And it came around that we couldn't because we don't have the manpower from Norman PD to be able to put people up there. So we looked for some other option that might work, and the sheriff said we could film with sheriff's deputies in that order. Well, that, that changes the math a lot. So what he's proposing that we do, and what I propose we do, is that we allow the sheriff to go in on, this is going to be on a temporary basis because the Norman Public Schools, uh, not, not Norman Police Department, that's their job to be, be able to do that by the PSSD. And so we don't want to supplant Norman in there, but he, well, you think that in three years, we'll have enough officers that we should be able to do the 17?
Whatever we're authorized. Right now, you know, what, the original plan on the PSSD was we would have four to run between those elementary schools, and we still have those four to fill. And that would be the four that would do that. Right now, last year and going into this year both, we will continue, I've been paying overtime for that to happen now. Uh, over 3,100 hours this last year. So because there is such a demand and people calling wanting officers or somebody at the elementary schools, uh, so we've been trying to provide that. Now, when you have four, that is just one sort of, uh, move in between four to five elementaries. Right now, we have 17 elementaries.
Yes, sir.
Um, just to clarify, who is calling and saying they want them? Parents, teachers, a blend? I just, I'm curious.
Parents mainly.
PTA folks contacted Dr. Migliarino and the chair of the Norman Public School Board and asked to meet with the mayor and say, here's, here's our concerns, here's what we'd love to see happen.
So PTA being all the PTAs?
The, the first group that made contact was primarily the Monroe Elementary School District group of parents.
And so that left us with a dilemma as, as to how to be able to do that because obviously PSSD is what voters had asked us to do and how could we do that? What I think we can do is to take the, uh, basically do a budget amendment because what this will do, basically do a budget amendment, let's finish one thought before I start another one, uh, budget amendment so that we'd be able to hire 17 more police officers to give him the ability to be able to fill those positions over three years this is going to take. And then do, uh, change our interlocal agreement to, with the public schools so that we'll allow, not allow, but we'll be able to use the sheriff's deputies as police officers in the interim. We're thinking three years. I, I hate to commit to three years solid because we don't know who we can do.
Quick question. So could the county do it without us and like we get to where we need to be and then they just leave and then we do our thing?
Uh, the county does have an agreement with Norman Public Schools and they currently provide that service at Dimensions. Um, so they, they already working with Norman Public Schools in that context where Norman Public Schools is kind of stuck. The public safety sales tax ordinance and ballot language kind of connect Norman Public Schools and the city of Norman in that respect. Um, and it, it didn't take into consideration that at some point, there may be a desire to add more because it talks about 13 and the school district's participation financially, but it doesn't say, what do you, what do you do if you want to grow?
Can I ask about the PSSD? I could have sworn that like Anthony said a couple weeks ago, or maybe it was last week, that it was never meant to like fully, uh... I guess it wasn't going to be something that was overflowing with money. It would always be a little short.
Oh.
I wouldn't say it was meant to be that way, but from the beginning, I think it's, it's, our sales tax dollars fell short of expectations. Uh, so up to this point, we've only been able to fill those nine SRO positions and not before 13. Um, and, and our agreement of the school district reflects that. We've got, um, I think we've got most of the equipment needs funded for the PSSD except for Fire Station 5 relocation, which is a big expense. Um, and at some point, once the big projects are done, the ordinance provides that all of that gets pulled into the general fund. We still have to follow the public safety sales tax ordinance, but, but it would all be accounted for in the general fund. Uh, and so there wouldn't be this transfer, uh, from the general fund to public safety sales tax at that point.
Right now, we have nine and, you know, that there's no, right now, there's no supplement from the general fund anymore going to the PSSD.
Plus a couple of years, sales tax has been better.
Yeah, yeah. But right now, we just have nine authorized. So we don't have those other four in the budget even higher right now.
And even if we did, NPS is still on the hook for 50% of that.
The ordinance says, and the ballot language itself said it would be jointly funded with a participating school district. So 50% has been the goal, I think, early on. Uh, Dr. Siano, who was the superintendent at that time, said, you know, we don't know what our budget's going to look like, what the state will do with it. So we don't know if we'll be able to do 50% forever, uh, but that's generally what they've been contributing for the personnel.
So it wasn't in the ballot language, 50/50?
It's just that jointly funded.
Is this where that three-year pilot program, 96K, comes into play?
It will be, um, an allocation from the state budget to the school district directly, and each school district will get the same dollar amount, net, net about $90,000 after the Department of Ed takes its administrative overhead. Each district will wind up using it in different ways to improve safety of the schools. In this particular case, it's a little bit less than the cost of one.
So, but that could be applied towards it?
Absolutely.
But we would have to wait on their governing body, which would be a school board, to say that's going to happen?
Yeah, and they're, they're still waiting for the rules to be finalized on the pilot program and what hoops they'll have to jump to and, and what strings will be attached to those dollars. So they're still kind of all in the, in the waiting game and that, those dollars could show up in January.
So we don't know for sure, like what amount that will be?
We're pretty sure the dollar amount's going to be right at $90,000, but when is a question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So would the county deputies be doing any training with our current SRO team before they go into the?
Um, the, the, the SRO training program in, in our, there's a acronym for...
NASRO.
Yes, NASRO. Um, that's a training program that the Cleveland County deputies go through, and I don't know if that's the same one our people go through.
That is what we go through, and, uh, they've had a school recently. We had an advanced school here recently. Ollie may be able to tell you how many of their people's actually trained, uh...
Uh, so currently, uh, we're just in a meeting not too long ago. Uh, so 10, uh, there were 10, uh, there were 10 in that school, but those, uh, those are already assigned to other locations. So, uh, the ones that are coming up, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have an idea of who would be trained and what they would be trained in. I think that's best asked through that, with that organization.
So they did, the undersheriff did indicate in, in, in their ability to bring on retirees with backgrounds that fit this particular need and primarily the personality type for an elementary school application. We don't really get to hire retirees the way the county does. They can hire retired police officers, um, and, and we're, our pension system doesn't allow for that kind of hiring on our part. So they can hire up quicker, and, um, I think they, they recognize the need for that training and, and want to be trained, um, to have that skill set and make sure it's in the books. Uh, we also had a conversation about communications. Uh, currently, the city of Moore and the city in, in Cleveland County, they have radio systems that aren't on the same frequency as our Harris radio system. And the Harris radio system came to us as part of that PSSD vote and, and the funding that came along with it.
Which I thought was supposed to make us in communication with everybody else.
It, it, we are...
Oklahoma City has Harris also and can connect with them.
Moore is in the process of moving that way, it sounds like.
Moore, looks like they may, they'll either come onto our system and they pay per radio or they'll go on Oklahoma City's system.
Which would be the same.
We would, we was hoping, and I think we have meetings with the county commissioners here a little later, we've already had a couple, I think, to see which way they're going to go.
We think, um, they recognize the value in being in communication with all of the other public safety agencies in the metro and whether, yeah, they go on their own or they ask us and pay per radio. In the interim, um, the radios they do utilize are programmable so they can be adjusted to be on the frequency that our SRO and our PD uses.
If, if they have the right radios. The radios that we know they have, have had were, we couldn't do that for them. Uh, but I think in the most recent meeting, they said that at least the radios for their SROs, they are able to be programmed.
If an officer's out in the, if a Norman police officer is out in the country and they needed a sheriff deputy for some reason, that, how is that, do they, they can't call them on the radio, they have to call them or dispatch can call them or how is that?
Yeah, generally, or we put, uh, you could, you can use a patch sometimes, but patches on recent events that have, were pretty big, were showing not to be reliable.
Swatting.
So we sure do not prefer to do that.
Um, so they have the same training, but is there a collaborative, like before they go in, our officers and the deputies will get together and?
We will get together.
Say like, this is how we do the?
I would get together with Sheriff Amoson and work out the, this is how it's going to go, uh, all the details on what we're going to do and how it would work. Uh, in the meeting today, they talked through some of that on how it would work, that they would just be basic security there. We would still come and take all the reports and do the incidents. If there was something on site that happened, they can deal with that, uh, but we would still want them to do some type of information report for us and notification so we can keep data consistent.
Chief, we did confirm that the data that our SROs gather on every contact is the same data that the county gathers at Dimensions for, for any contact. And we highlighted how important data gathering is to be able to make decisions and are you getting the outcome you envisioned. Uh, so everybody was on the same page about the, the value of the data. And we think, um, you know, a lot of the contact, um, at the elementary school sites, and you probably do see it in the middle schools and high schools too, but, you know, a non-custodial parent showing up to pick up the kid when they're not supposed to be the one picking up the kid. Uh, those types of incidents may be requiring that, that response.
And then I would like to know what the cost of that overtime the chief mentioned. If that's, if we're spending a bunch on overtime, it would make sense to go ahead and just hire someone, right? But...
Uh, it's roughly around, uh, was, uh, about $150,000.
So that's almost two.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It was, uh, two and a quarter if you look at two and three quarters, I believe, something like that.
And I'm just assigning $100,000 budget to every officer. So that brings it to the 17, adding 17. Um, and it may be taking three years to even get that many, but at $100,000 an officer, almost 2 million additional dollars we would need to generate per year, uh, to that. And how would that work with just our regular, I say regular, personnel needs in the police department outside of the SRO program? So trying to add new officers potentially to the force and add 17 new SROs? I know there'd be, they do both, but...
So based on, on the numbers...
Budgeting for adding them both.
Right. The schedule for the, uh, January academy would bring us back to full staffing. So we'd be back at ground zero at 181 and then from that.
Fingers crossed.
Um, and we, and we recognize the, the normal attrition rate from the department with retirements and, and, uh, you know, career changes and the like. Uh, you know, you, you add four or five or six or seven or, and a great recruitment, maybe 10, and you're having a backfill for four or five retirements out the other side. So, um, it's, and that's an ongoing battle. That's something the police department has to deal with that challenge, you know, every single year. So, uh, you're giving them credit for, uh, looking at opportunities to have multiple academies going at one time, uh, through some different, uh, programs available. And, um, it's just, we're looking down every potential avenue as the opportunity to get back to full staffing for the first time in about five years and then work on, uh, growing those numbers.
That's, that's just maybe my main concern is the city solely being responsible funding-wise and recruiting and all that to do. We're already doing all the recruiting and everything, I guess, but funding-wise to come up with the full thing seems a bit daunting. Just, I don't know if our budget grows by 2 million a year. We're having, we have a budget surplus right now because we've had a couple of good sales tax years, but is our general fund growing by that much per year?
A million and a half, I think, in the most recent, uh, '21 to '22. Um, and, you know, every month, we all open the envelope together and look just to see are, are projections still holding true. And as of that July sales tax distribution, the answer was yes. Um, I think we'll get another sales tax number this week. Uh, we'll be able to compare that to August receipts of last year too and notify council, but we're still trending relatively solidly. And what we, what we, and we had this conversation during budget development with Mr. Francisco about, you know, how close we were to paying off that PSSD debt issuance, about three years' worth of debt service, service payments. And we asked Mr. Francisco to evaluate, uh, how those bonds were issued and were they built to be recalled or paid off early? And the answer was nope, we didn't, we didn't write them with the intention that we might be able to retire that debt sooner. Uh, but what council could choose to do is out of general fund reserves, establish the reserve to make that debt service payment out of one-time reserves for the next three years, and that basically frees up that revenue in your current fiscal year to address it.
Then we still have to build Fire Station 5, though.
Yep, and, and...
And staff it.
Yeah, there's a, of course, all those...
I guess it's already staffed, but maybe more staff.
Well, and, and also, uh, that conversation with the public safety study on where Fire Station 5 gets relocated heavily dependent on where a turnpike alignment might be. If it's west of Lake Thunderbird, that's one decision to be made about the location of Fire Station 5. If it's east of the lake, that's a different decision. So, um, all that effort is underway, full speed ahead to figure out where on the map we put the pin for Fire Station 5 relocation.
Well, I'm definitely interested in knowing more about the deputy situation as that evolves and if they're going to be helping and how that works. So, I mean, I guess whatever we have to, whatever routes we cobble it together, you know?
It, it, it is kind of an interesting thought that, um, Norman Public Schools, city of Norman, Cleveland County would be the first, we think, in the state of Oklahoma to be there. And that's just kind of a fascinating thought that we, we're close. We know some more, more public schools has some rotating SROs between elementary schools, but nobody is here yet.
And more PD is the SRO there too?
Um, they do, some work with Cleveland County and some work with the Moore Police Department.
I think Moore does everything inside their city limits. You know, Moore's about the third biggest school district in the state, so.
South OKC.
I think they do everything inside their city limits, uh, then county, Oklahoma City cover outside of the city limits.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gray?
Um, I was just curious because there seems like a lot of speculation, like if this happens, then this can happen. So, and we assume that school board will do all of the 90K, but what if they choose to do some of it and invest in other things, like automatic locking for the front of houses?
They did that through the bond program, the 353 million dollar bond program. But what they will, uh, may, may ask us that they want to do is put counselors in the elementary schools. And they, was it six that they were talking about?
Yeah, I think their goal is to add six behavioral health specialists in the elementary schools and with...
Is that one per every elementary?
It, it, they would, they would like school nursing. I don't think they'd be at every school site, but they would be, they would go to every school at least once a week based on caseload.
So they don't have those counselors currently?
Correct. And, and what they've found, and it was a, a meeting that I was invited to attend with all of the school behavioral health professionals, and it scared me when I walked out of that room realizing what, what the school administrators see. When they talk about a third grader with suicidal ideologies, that was not a thing when I was in the third grade. That was not what they dealt with. And those are things they're dealing with now. And sometimes at school, maybe the only medical coverage some students get is what they get for that, you know, six or seven hour period from first bell to last bell. Um, and, and with, I mean, if you'd like, um, Mr. Justin Milner, the assistant superintendent, uh, he said he'd be happy to come in and have, and, and share with you those statistics that they deal with on the behavioral health side at the schools.
So some of that money could be on six counselors and some of it could be on officers?
They, they, not that 90,000, that's, it's all safety, safety, but at some point in the future, it, it, you know, their goal would be to spend their discretionary budget, whatever that looks like, on this behavioral health thing. They recognize the outcomes at early intervention. That's the greatest likelihood of success in addressing the challenges of those, of those kiddos. But it is a fascinating thing, if it doesn't scare you to pieces, to listen to what the schools are doing and, and, and dealing with on a regular basis. But I could schedule that for a, a study session or a committee meeting and, and, and have him share with you what he shared with, you know, just among their administrators. It was, it was fascinating. Um, yeah, over the last two bond issuances, not just the big one that we just recently voted approved, but the prior two, Nick said they addressed most of the physical security needs of the schools, points of entry, locked doors, bulletproof glass, those kinds of things. Uh, a lot of the smaller school districts will probably use their first couple of years' worth of that public safety allocation to do that. Uh, but our schools are already starting off with a pretty, pretty, and you guys, you're there every day. I think the physical facilities are pretty darn secure.
Okay. Hmm. Thank you.
Other thoughts or questions? Well, what I'd like to do, if I may, is, uh, get your opinion on, do you want to do a budget amendment? Do we want to hire 17 police officers? Uh, do we want to initiate this interlocal agreement? Are we good to go on that or?
I'm good with the agreement. I probably need more information about a budget amendment that large, but, I mean, that's a lot.
We'll package it, get it out to Reed early, and we could potentially talk about it next Tuesday at a study session, have it all fine.
Like to talk about the retreat too, probably if we have time.
One of the things we also have to coordinate with that is, is that giving public schools the ability, they only meet once a month, and they meet Monday. And they'd, uh, like to know what we're going to do so they can move, basically. And, and they can get their, we can get the sheriff going and all the rest of that. Uh...
Yeah.
So if we waited till, um, retreat...
Kind of want to know what they're going to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, isn't it?
Um, I agree with Councilmember Holman. I am curious what they're going to do, but also when do they meet? Like, have they already met?
No, Monday, Monday at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, they'll meet, uh, this upcoming Monday and classes begin on Thursday next week. Students met.
So regardless, we're stuck until next month. So we could do the study sessions. We'll talk about it at retreat because they won't even meet again until next month.
They're going to bump them.
And if I'm not mistaken, as I choke on air, on the first day of school or first couple of days of school, we typically, we've got...
Have all the schools covered.
Officers at every single school site. And just, there's a lot of traffic and a lot of parents forget how to drive when they're dropping off, uh, kids, et cetera. And there's a lot of first time parents at school. So, uh, we do load up heavily and we're a real visible group. Um, we also had a conversation and, and, uh, this, this may sit really, really well with Councilmember Holman. Um, we will be in the process of surplusing about 19 vehicles, uh, from the police department. I think, uh, 17 are black and white patrol units and two of them are detective units that you really don't, doesn't look like cop car anyway. But the, um, the opportunity, the district said, they could maintain some of those vehicles that we wouldn't want to get into a high-speed pursuit over, but have them at the school sites in fully operational condition, just as an, another layer of a visible deterrent at the elementary schools. So that was a, a, a thought they had. They said, we have shop guys that can keep tires on them and keep gas in the tank, um, but we know they'd be surplus, so, you know, you probably wouldn't want to take it into a high-speed pursuit. But just as a, and we have, you know, cop cars at the mall during Christmas is a...
Some of our equipment would come out, you know, like the ones we've set out, like a YFAC and things, they're sort of cleaned out, they're ready to sew off.
The Crown Vic at Irving Middle School could be a real cool deal, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Other thoughts or comments? Okay. What I understand you to tell me is you want to pick it up in two weeks?
Uh, next week at the study session.
Next week at the study session, okay.
Hopefully Councilmembers Peacock and Shulua will ask.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Reforma will be here at 6:30. She was in route, so, but...
Are there any, uh, hard deadlines that we need to be aware of in this decision?
Uh, the, the decision can't go any faster than council's ability. So, um, obviously they would love to be like fully lined up and ready to roll on Thursday and next week, but if it takes a little longer for the conversation, it's going to take a little longer for the conversation.
They'll be, they'll be safe. That's the big thing because those, the policemen will be there and the deputies will be there eventually. They're, they're not going to leave them hanging. Uh, okay. Well, that works. Uh, let's do that. Next item on the agenda is consideration of adjourning into executive session. It's authorized by Oklahoma Statute Title 25, Section 307b4, to discuss pending litigation in the case of Thompson versus Norman Regional Hospital et al. And case number CIV 19113SLP and possible litigation associated with Travis King versus City of Norman. Do I have a motion to move into special, uh, executive session?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. We are in executive session.
Mayor Francis, we're going to have to ask you to move.
Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of August 8th, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Schuler is absent. Councilmember Montoya.
Present.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Councilmember Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Matthew Peacock, absent. Mayor.
I am here. All right. Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That happens. All right. Approval of minutes. Item number one, consideration of the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, minutes of April 11th, 2023. Need a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion. Second, the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Time for council announcements. I'll start at Board One. I was too fast.
Sorry. You switched screens.
My only announcement is I got quite a few emails from residents of Ward One and the surrounding community asking about the food pantry at the Oakhurst Park. And I got information from Mr. Powell. He can probably explain better where they're going to move it to. But we are not closing that food pantry down. So just want to let everybody know that. And I'll let Mr. Powell say where it's going to be. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Your Honor. The fact that there is not a policy that describes how or where they're placed was a kind of an eye-opening opportunity for us to develop policy. Mr. Jason Olson and his team are putting together some policy recommendations to take to the Parks and Recreation Parks Board. They will modify as they see fit and bring those recommendations to council for adoption. And it'll lay out like the wheres and the who maintains and the what happens if it falls in disrepair. But that'll be at council's ultimate discretion, and we'll advance. Thank you.
So I have just a few. First, good evening, Norman, Oklahoma. If you have not signed up to receive Norman news, it's a great way to receive information about events and news happening in our city. So you can go to normanok.gov/norman-news. I also recently toured the Low Barrier Shelter and met with the operator. And I just wanted to mention a few observations that I noticed while I was there. I noticed a caseworker meeting with someone to develop a housing plan. I saw people reading. What else? I saw elderly men and women. I also saw an employed individual. And the only reason I know this individual is employed because I've seen this person at their place where they work. And then it was quiet and clean. And these people have been struck with hard times. As we all know, you know, prices have gone up, there's a housing shortage, and things of that nature. When affordable housing is scarce, and when a landlord decides to not renew a lease for whatever reason, where are these people supposed to go? I don't know the answer to that question. But if you have any suggestions, please stick around and provide some suggestions. Other than that, thank you all for being here. And for those of you watching online, I'm glad you're with us.
Councilmember Grant.
Good evening, Norman. And especially Ward Four. Art walk is this Friday, and I hope to see you all in about. Homeless updates will be presented in Oversight, which happens every third Thursday, so next week. Councilmember Schuler is the one that chairs that committee. Our unhoused population info page is live, and it's where you can find our action plan and our study, which is what informs us as we try to find solutions for homelessness. It's also where you can find current information about 718 North Porter. We're still working on it. I have been to pre-development, and I will be at Planning Commission. I don't get to speak at that, but I will be there to listen and observe. And I would like to have a word of caution on hyperbolic rhetoric. I got an account from a local downtown business employee at a store that had an unwarranted attack on a mentally ill, potentially unhoused individual who, in their unwell state, was touching the store employee on the shoulder. That's not what really bothered the employee, though. What happened was, was a vigilante or would-be savior attacked this man, tore open his shirt, bloodied hit his head when he threw him to the ground and drug him out of the store. The employees were traumatized. The one that was being touched on the shoulder was actually leaving an abusive marriage. So that kind of violent action actually has ripple effects, not just for the person who was injured. The store employee that told me this story said that he called around, and he found out that man was not permanently damaged and was doing all right. So as we talk about these issues, I hope we really suss out the nuance for why somebody might be unwell and unhoused. Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Nash, you were hiding behind. I was counting, and I couldn't see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no announcements this week for Ward Five.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember.
Well, you were right to skip them anyway. Okay, so two quick little things. If you know me, if you've listened to me ever speak up here, you know, I get really excited about Big Trash Day. And so they just released the fall schedule. So Ward Six, our Big Trash Day will be October 21st. It hurts my feelings. It's a week after my 40th birthday. I was hoping for like a birthday Big Trash Day. Maybe we can switch. I don't know. I'll talk to Sean. Sean, where are you at? I'm coming. Okay. So there's that. And then my only other comment is Evan Dunn. Hello. I know we're not supposed to direct it, but I am. I was doing yard work recently, and I was amongst some weeds. And I was thinking, what would Evan Dunn say right now? So I just want to let the public know that when you do come and you do address us and speak to us, we do hear what you say, and it does stay with us. So I would encourage everyone to please, no matter what it is that you have to say, please come and address your council. Thanks, Evan.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sir. A couple things. First, I want to thank and congratulate Mr. Tommy Martin for completing 50 years of service to the city of Norman. I think we had a recognition of him last week. And just really amazing to have somebody dedicate that much of their life to service to our city. So really appreciate him and wish him well in retirement. I think he's, yeah, should have a pretty good time. Also want to let everybody know there's a grand reopening of Chuck E. Cheese tomorrow. Councilor Peacock isn't here to make that announcement, but that's tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00. It's open to the public. And then next week, on the 15th, 16th, Sage at Cobblestone will be having a grand opening, which is a new 55-plus independent living center located in Ward Seven at the entrance to the Cobblestone Creek Golf Course and Neighborhood. So they'll be having a grand opening and tour of the facility from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on the 16th. So I encourage anybody interested to check that out. And then also, anybody interested in public transit or updates on our road construction projects, I would encourage you to either attend or tune in to the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting on August 24th here at City Hall at 4:00 p.m. This monthly meeting is where we get the monthly ridership report on public transit. We get an update on the new route system, progress, and implementation. And we also get updates on any current infrastructure, road projects, sidewalk projects going on in the city of Norman. So if you have any questions or comments about projects going on like that or about the public transit system, please feel free to email me directly or call if you'd like, or your council member. Any of us are fine. And we'll make sure that those questions are asked and we get answers from city staff. Or if there's an issue you'd like us to bring up in the committee for discussion regarding transit or street infrastructure, please let us know, and we will take that up. Again, August 24th. And then the last thing I do want to mention is that we have heard a lot of comments from the public at our meetings the last few months about crime, about homelessness. And I have asked the city manager to, since we cannot, since we're not allowed to, I guess, respond directly to you all in this meeting, and we have to wait for two weeks and come back. I've asked that the city manager and the police department prepare an update, a public update, about what is going on in Norman and what is the plan of action to address the issues that we are dealing with. And so I know that we all hear the feedback and the comments, the concerns that you all have. And I think it's a good idea if we lay it all out. We hear from the police department directly, hear what the plan is. We hear from the city manager and the rest of us about what exactly are we doing going forward. So I think that'll be helpful. I think we're trying to figure out next Tuesday.
Either next Tuesday or the following one.
Or the following council meeting. Okay. So stay tuned for that. That will be in a public setting. I'm not sure about back and forth, a question and answer, but I hope we can get some information out there. And again, let everybody know that we do have a plan that we're going forward with to try to address the concerns everyone has. But I also do want to note that we have heard a lot of statistics stated and data about crime in Norman and about how people feel unsafe. But I do want to just share some comparison of numbers that I have come up with. Homicides in the year 2023 this year so far, Norman has had two. They were both last month, within a week of each other. One was a domestic violence situation, and the other was a road rage incident. Neither one would have been prevented even if we had 1,000 police officers on the streets of Norman right now. Neither one. We went half the year without having a single homicide in a city this size of 130,000 plus. Oklahoma City has had 47 homicides this year. Tulsa has had 26. Edmund has had three, so more than us. Moore has had two. And Broken Arrow has had eight. So Norman is bigger than Broken Arrow, Edmund, and Moore in population and land area. And yet those cities are experiencing similar issues, if not worse, than we are when it comes to violent crime. So I just encourage everybody to keep a perspective. And things can be bad. We have our own problems. But a lot of cities are dealing with very serious problems. It is not unique to Norman. And it's upon all of us to come together and try to figure out what we're going to do here in Norman about it. And so I appreciate everybody that is sincerely and with good intention, working with the community, hosting meetings, talking with neighbors, trying to figure out how the best way we can move forward. I think that is the best way, and that's what it's going to take of us all. So anyway, I am someone that's very proud to live in Norman. I think we're all very fortunate, especially if we have a roof over our head every night. And there really isn't anywhere else in Oklahoma for sure that I would want to live other than Norman. So I'm going to continue doing everything I can to listen and try to come up with solutions, viable, real solutions, instead of just trying to blame everybody else for what's wrong and offering no solutions. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Parks and Rec, the Norman Tourism Bureau, and the new Norman Sports Authority or Commission, whatever we're calling it, for the beat ball tournament that we had. It was the World Series. The winners were from Indianapolis. They were the Indy Thunder. It wasn't Oklahoma. Maybe next year, maybe two years from now, we'll be able to do that. But thank you all to volunteers, and thank you all to the staff for the wonderful job that was done. It was just absolutely amazing to watch them work. All right. Next item, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Item Two through Item 28, with the exception of Item 26, be placed on the Consent Docket. Need a motion to place Items Two through 28?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Thank you. Motion on the floor is to place Items Two through 28, with the exception of.
Our vote has been cast, and the motion to place Items Two through 28, with the exception of 26, on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Consent Docket.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? Hearing none. Motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our vote has been cast. The Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 26, Resolution Adopting the Young Family Athletic Center Facility's Policy Manual for the Operation of the Young Family Athletic Center by the Parks and Recreation Department. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Recognize Jason Olson, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Jason Olson, Director of Parks and Recreation. Let me see if I can. It's always a mystery which button you hit on this mouse. I'd like to thank you for having me up here to talk today about, anytime that I get up here and talk, it's either going to be really bad, which, thank goodness, is not really bad, or it's going to be really cool or really fun. And this is an opportunity to talk about one of our Norman Forward projects. The Young Family Athletic Center, it's a $42 million project that is going into University North Park today. We're talking about the facility policy, adoption of that. We were in a MOU with the Santa Fe Family Life Center out of Oklahoma City. We did stop negotiations with them, and the Parks and Recreation Department is recommending that the Parks Department operate that facility. A little background on the Young Family Athletic Center, in October of 2015, Norman Forward Sales Tax was adopted for quality of life projects, included a new multi-sports complex and indoor aquatic facility. In 2018 and 19, a lot of. In 2018 and 19, a lot of discussion actually carried on in two, two different calendar years, council combined the multi-sports and indoor aquatic facility into one project. And in 2019, the UMP project plan amended, was amended to provide $5.15 million for land acquisition and to supplement the construction and cover MPC in Norman Public Schools fees for the first seven years, which is $50,000 a year, for a total of $350,000. And in 2021, the city did come to an agreement with the Trey Young Family Foundation and they will donate $4 million for the construction of the Young Family Athletic Center. And that's when we did name it the YFAC, Young Family Athletic Center. That's going to be the theme of tonight. So every time you hear that, people at home might want to take a drink. It approves an MOU with Norman Regional Health System and a hospital commits fully funding and designing the construction of a human sports and performance clinic inside the YFAC. Operator discussions, like we were talking about a little bit earlier, 2021 council did approve an MOU with Santa Fe through an RFP process. That's kind of what we're discussing today is the negotiations on that stopped. So we are recommending that the Parks Department operate that. Staff proposes, city operates the facility, ensure community needs are met and balanced with tournaments and opportunities, along with making sure that our community needs come first. Staff presents the Young Family Athletic Center and a facility policy manual, which we also talked about a few weeks ago at a council conference. Input from the council-appointed committees and boards were taken on these operation facility policies in July. We met with both the Norman Forward Sales Tax Oversight Financial, let me start that one again, the Norman Forward Sales Tax Citizen Financial Oversight Board, we usually shorten that to CFAB. And then later on, about a week later, we met with the Norman Forward Ad-Hoc Committee. And then just last week, we met with the Norman Board, Park of Commissioners, all adopting the policy manual to move forward as was presented. YFAC is slated to open in early 2024. We are hoping to cut a ribbon maybe in February during the All-Star break so we can get our hero Trey Young back in town to celebrate that with us. We do anticipate he will play on the All-Star game, but it is a full week, so we think we might be able to grab him for a day or two. Just throwing that out there, making sure that people don't think we don't have confidence in our local star. Staff is in discussions with more, more than a dozen, dozen potential tournaments to be held, held at the YFAC. We're actually about 15 at this point. Amenities to be offered at the YFAC, of course, are eight full-size basketball courts, 12 volleyball courts, 18 pickleball courts, which didn't make it on there, 25-yard warm-up and recreation pool, 25-meter competition pool, concession and retail space. Kind of hopping into what we did present to three of our citizen-appointed boards and at a council committee just a few weeks ago. This policy will give authority to the park director to set a price and a fee schedule. Annual agreements with our operating partners, advertising and marketing agreements, we will have a, I believe it is a 70-foot, 74-foot LED screen, which we think that is quite lucrative for all the heads who will be in side of facility to sell marketing. Not before the park director can adopt these fees, they have to be reviewed by our park board. It also goes into the facilities policy to define what a community partner is. Our community partner is, at the YFAC will be designed, defined as a school sports club, a local nonprofit that fits within the mission of the YFAC, that will be allowed to enter in the annual agreements with the Parks and Recreation Department. Parks and Recreation Department will keep a community and operational partner list. The partners will be recommended through the Norman Board of Park Commissioners and approved by the Parks and Rec Director. Also into this fee policy that we have or policy for the YFAC, we did kind of put out an initial fee schedule. We want to make sure that our local residents are able to take advantage of this. So you, you see Norman residents and if you're an outtowner, you're either a senior, veteran, military, or first responder, that's what those little abbreviations are for, you will be able to pay an annual payment of $300 per year or $30 a month for a family. It'd be $960 a year, which is a family of four, or $100 a month. Memberships for non-residents will go up a little bit to 360 a year or $35 a month. Family payments for our non-residents will be about $1,200 a year or $120 a month. We will have scholarship opportunities for Norman residents and it'll be on the same principles that we use at the Westwood Family Aquatic Center, which is if you're on free or reduced lunch, you'd be about 80%. Or if you're on, if you're on free lunches, you are at 80% on reduced lunches, you'll be at 50%. We do have people qualifications if you are not a Norman Public School student as well. Day passes, we'll offer, also offer those. So swimming passes and passes into the multi-sports will actually be separate. So if you do come and want to use a pool as a purchasing a day pass and then want to go play pickleball, you will have to pay two separate fees, but those fees will be as follows. Residents will be $5, non-residents will be $7. Seniors, veterans, military, first responders will be $5. 12 and under will drop to $3 and under three, if you're able to shoot a basket and you're three years old, we're going to let you in for free. So same with multi-sports, the same fee schedule. Private or practice rentals, this is one of the things that we do think that we're going to be able to be very successful on and we want to make sure that we have opportunities for our local teams to come in there and practice or for our families to come in there and have a party to do pickleball or basketball or swim. Basketball courts for a half-court 35, going up to 70 per hour. Volleyball courts are about $70 per hour. Pickleball will be $45 an hour. We also, once again, we'll have these set up if you want to come in, just pay a day fee or if you're a member. Conference room, minimum two hours. Usually this would be either rolled into an event rental or a party, about $25 per hour for one of the conference rooms. One's connected to the pool, one's connected to the multi-sports area. Pool lane rental, if you want a lane all to yourself, about $25 per hour. Recreation pool, if you want to rent for a party or a practice, will be $150 per hour, minimum two hours. Same thing with the competition pool. Event rentals, and this is where our city manager comes out and say, other people's money. This is where we think that we are going to make the majority of our money and we want to get those big events, which we already have 15 on the line for a possible rental. If this gets adopted tonight, we're going to go ahead and move forward with those 15 groups. But for a basketball court, per court is $65 to $85 per hour, minimum of four hours. And if you look at a typical basketball tournament or a volleyball tournament, the way you come in there and rent the full facility for, and if they rent all the courts in full facility for two days, 12 hours apiece, you're talking between $12,000 to $15,000, depending on what kind of rental. And if anybody's been to a competitive sports tournament, they will probably think that that's quite cheap because not only do you have to pay a team fee if you're in on the other end, but you're also playing emissions, which would be set by whoever is renting the basketball turn, basketball courts or volleyball courts. We also have volleyball courts, $50 to $75 an hour, and you've seen these as they fluctuate. It just depends on what technology they need access to, if they need access to, for us to run, run score tables or take gate, just all that price will fluctuate. Pickleball courts, like I said, have the ability to do about 18 of those, $30 to $45 an hour. We do think that we all have the opportunity to do banquets or non-athletic events, banquets, concerts, anything that kind of goes along with that, we see that rental, depending on what, what they need from us, $500 to $750, minimum of four-hour rental. Same thing with full, full pool rental, so that would be for your duels or meets, swim meets, depending on what technology or manpower they need from us, that'd be $500 to $750 an hour, minimum of four hours. Our operational partners that we have been talking to are listed as follows. Norman Public Schools, which y'all saw the, the amount that's set aside for them for about $50,000 a year for seven years. Santa Fe Family Life Center, we did come to a verbal agreement with them as we kind of unwound the operator agreement that we will work with them for a tournament partner. Norman Optimist Club, our local youth league partner, they will help us run basketball leagues, volleyball leagues. Trey Young Basketball will be our basketball club partner. Sooner Swim Club will be our swim club partner and we are still working to identify our volleyball club partner. Most of these, as you look down, if they're not on a hourly rate or a percentage rate, like we'll work with Norman Optimist Club to share a percentage with them on all the leagues for, for a facility use. The other ones are kind of clicked in at about a minimum of $50,000 apiece per year. This is a picture of my friend Trey Young. He played at Whittier Rec Center as a junior jammer and went to our after-school program, known as family, for 20-odd years. He is just asking what questions you have, so.
You're not giving us the YFAC?
Maybe both.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. So I request that this item be pulled from the Consent Docket because I have a couple of concerns. The main, the major concern, and I'll try to keep this relevant to the item at hand, but the main concern is that I don't see any safeguards to guarantee or at least commit to the residents that they'll have access to this facility. I see a lot of commitments to our operating partners and for the most part, our operating partners, and that's, that's fantastic, they've got limits built into the contracts that we're establishing with them. There is one contract that has no limits established with it and that is with Norman Regional and their use of facility, that Norman Regional may have access at no charge to all or any portion of the facility during or after hours of operation on a first-come, first-served basis, according to the city's rental slash booking policies provided previously scheduled programming or services are not reduced as a result of such booking. And so that, therein lies the importance of this policy manual, is that this policy manual is the last, the last safeguard that we have to protect the residents and their use of this facility, their tax dollars are paying for. And currently, I don't see any, any of those, any kind of guarantee that say a certain percentage of the time will be dedicated to public use, general population. And so the issue that I wanted to highlight to the council is that perhaps it's best to take this policy manual, have it updated and in two weeks reassess what's, you know, what we can do to guarantee that the people are going to have full use of this facility.
Yeah, and the, and what I would apply to that is, I guess, it's council's freedom in that, any way that you want to. We are kind of hopping a little into the details of full operations. As we set aside operations, we will have hours available throughout the day, depending on what, what practice rentals or what events that we have going on. We'll make sure that we'll put out a monthly schedule to the public to make sure that they have a opportunity to come in. And the detail you're going to with Norman Regional, our agreement that they will have access mainly during the day when we think that the center will be slower into the pool area for physical therapy, maybe into the, the basketball for walking area, but they do have a lot of area out back that they will have access to as well that, that they'll be able to perform what they need to do for their operations.
Right. None of those assumptions or those limitations are in the contract with Norman Regional. So can we put them in the policy to guarantee that, if those are the limitations that we want to impose, that those limitations are there to protect our use and the general public's use of the athletic facility?
We can put those in the policy and the policy is updated, we have a little, I think right there at the beginning, that the policy can be updated, I mean, not only by you, of course, and I don't know if we can amend, that would be a question for our attorney, but we can also amend the contract at the request of the city manager and through recommendation of the park board as well.
All right. Well, I, I with a clear conscience cannot approve a policy that I don't see having safeguards in place for my constituents or the residents of the city as a whole. But thank you for answering my questions.
Any comments from the public? Would the public like to make any comments? Yes.
Hey, Steve Ellis, Court 4. I'm glad this came off consent. I didn't realize that it had been until I got here. And I was going to ask a question that may actually overlap a lot with Councilmember Nash's, which was basically about the community and operational partners. And the, the question was basically, in terms of an operational partner, it seems like we've got the people who will be running certain kinds of sports things, but what is it, something like a sixth of the facility or is it a little less than that, is going to be, is going to be controlled by Norman Regional? And it doesn't seem like they're taken into account in the policy at all, even listed as a, a community partner or an operational partner. I know that the, the, the contract that you sign with them gives them a certain kind of status, but it looks like just for them paying the marginal costs that they created by joining this, they get basically both rent-free access to the building for, for 40 years and it turns out it's kind of preferential access too. So, you know, it's one of those things that I think is worthy of a kind of Strong Towns kind of reminder, right? For a city to, to sort of get ahead, it has to be a city that at least gets some sort of return on its investment. And it looks like what we've done here is we've sort of made a deal with Norman Regional. And I'm happy that they're covering their marginal costs because we don't even always do that in Norman. But it also seems like they're getting all of the sort of surplus from the cooperative agreement that we have with them. And I would hope that we would at least get, you know, something more out of that, either more money or preferential access to, to some of their services, or at a minimum that we make them sort of like pay for use of the rest of the facility in the way that everybody else does. And I'll be asking actually a question later when we have the, the budget thing, just like where are the, like, where's the money for utilities and stuff reflected in the sort of like budget numbers that are on the council tonight? So Anthony, got me? If you understand that question? All right, thanks.
Alva Brockus, 1228 Wesley Lane. I just would like to remind the council that the partners that are working with the YFAC and bringing various athletic activities in are serving community members in the form of adults and children who play those sports. So it's not like those activities are not part of our constituencies. Those are our constituencies. Thank you.
Mayor, wouldn't you ask any more of this if you want to speak? More city council, is that separate? Because the last time you called name, I don't know if this is just on the park and recreation or...
This is just on this item, ma'am.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Great work, Mitch.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I too am concerned about providing 40 years of rent-free space for the Norman Regional who are getting this space for themselves essentially. And at what, $60 a square foot, which is a going rate, I believe, that would be several million dollars after 40 years. That could have been part of the revenue for the city and offsetting the citizens' costs. That concerns me. Why would the city sign a contract for 40 years rent-free?
Mr. Manager, what was the, the amount of money that the hospital, Norman Regional Hospital gave to us for that facility?
When the YFAC was originally in concept, it did not include roughly 24,500 square feet of clinic space. When the idea of including these human performance clinic opportunities in the space, the Citizens Oversight Committee said, we think that would be a great add. Norman Regional Healthcare Systems paid for the entire cost of building. Norman Regional Healthcare Systems paid for the entire cost of building, that part of the building, about seven million dollars added to the total construction cost. They also included and paid for their proportionate share of the engineering for the whole building. And they will pay approximately three million dollars in tenant improvements to outfit the space. So that was a space the city of Norman could not afford to build, so Norman Regional built their own space in the building. Absolutely, they built it for themselves. Correct.
Ma'am, you're out of order. You're out of order. He's up. Evan?
Hi, thank you. Evan Dunn, 1400 Garfield Avenue, Ward Seven. I was gonna vote, in order, I was gonna vote, I was gonna support this, until Mr. Nash made some points that I hadn't even considered. And in thinking about it, is there like a ratio that we could say, even in an event in which we have a weekend tournament, that we only use six of the eight courts? Is there some way that we could guarantee that? I don't know. Maybe those are amenable ideas. I had a question about the pickleball. Aren't those, oh, let me say this. I was going to support it and make a reference to Trey playing in Atlanta, and the peach being the, the symbol of Georgia, and the possibility of us maybe planting some peach trees there. It might be some, some crossover there. The thing about the pickleball, aren't those like tennis courts? So could we theoretically have like tennis matches in this? Theoretically, possible? Okay, all right. I'm not sure what I would do now. Maybe I'm, I'm glad I'm not up there.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Cindy Rogers, Ward Four. I appreciate Councilmember Nash's comments, because I think this is a concern I've had as a member of the Oversight Board, C-Fob. It's Norman Forward, not with the sales text, Jason. And I know in the senior center contract, I might be getting them all confused because we get hundreds and hundreds of pages. I believe that has a designated number of hours. And I thought this contract, maybe, maybe it changed since we saw it, because I thought the contract we saw had a minimum of fifty-five hours of open to the public space. So maybe, Jason, you can tell me if that changed from what we talked about at our council meeting? And if that did change, that there's no set guarantee, then I have major qualms about that, too. And while a lot of these organizations are for our local youth groups, we have to remember that there's more kids that aren't involved in these clubs. And we want to make sure they have access, plus young adults and other people who aren't hooked up with sports organizations. So I guess that's my question. Maybe you can clarify that, Jason, for me about the contract and the minimum hours? I thought that was, I thought we talked about that? Okay, so that changed from what, so we actually didn't talk about this particular contract at the Oversight Board? Seems like things have changed from what we discussed.
Do you want to speak to that?
So in those operating contracts, I'm a little, probably getting a little bit confused. The exactly the hours that we had for the senior center, she might be correct on fifty-five, but we're talking at the YFAC, when we're negotiating with Santa Fe, we were planning on being open to the public a minimum of eighty-five hours per week, and this is no different. We will be open to the public minimum eighty-five per hours per week. We will have consistent hours during the day. We haven't kind of honed in, honed in on exact hours, but it was somewhere we were planning opening at five-thirty. We haven't figured out what time we're closing at, but we're talking either eight or nine o'clock. And then on the weekends, we also will be open seven to eight hours per day, starting a little earlier on Saturday and a little bit later on Sunday. But we're going to be hitting minimum eighty-five hours open to the public per week for both the pool and the basketball gyms.
Paul Wilson, Ward One. I'm in support of the YFAC. I do have some concerns about some of this, so I would hope that you guys would vote no today. I know you say it's open eighty-five hours to the general public, but as you know, when you start adding in tournaments, everything else, that eighty-five hours shrinks. With it being open till about eight or nine o'clock, most people won't even be able to get to the facility till after they get off work at five. So, and then the other thing is thirty dollars a month versus Norman Regional getting it basically rent-free, like Councilmember Nash mentioned. A forty-one million dollar project between Norman Regional and Trey Young Foundation, they put eleven million dollars into it. That means thirty million dollars of taxpayer money went to the other part of it. If I'm paying thirty dollars a month, and I want to have some guarantee that I can get in there, use the pool, use the basketball courts, and use the facility. I mean, if there's no guarantee, why am I going to spend thirty dollars a month? I can spend roughly a little bit more than that and go to the Y and be guaranteed to get in there. So that's all I had to say about it. I mean, thirty dollars a month, we should be able to be able to use it when we want to. Thanks.
Gravel, Ward Four. Can you confirm or deny if the Cleveland County family YMCA and the Marie K. Sales Swim Complex will be closing due to the Young Family Athletic Center?
I can answer that question. Kyle Hurley, Ward Eight. I am on the Board of Directors for the YMCA, and we will not be closing the facility as a result of the YFAC.
Thank you, Kyle. Yeah, all right. Are there any further comments from council regarding this? Stephen, excuse me, Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I will yield, yeah, sure.
So, and I live in Ward Six, own property in Ward Four. My question is, what happens to the existing basketball courts, athletic facilities that we have now in Norman Parks and Rec system?
They still remain part of the system.
They remain part of the system. They're open access to the public.
To the best of my knowledge.
Are there, are there going to be any renovations to those existing facilities? They are quite old and rundown. And what I see is the youth that use those facilities and the programs that's happening in those facilities kind of being left behind. And this is a lot of money being thrown at the new and shiny when we have existing facilities that need upgrades in air conditioning. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Rob Norman, Ward Three. I am a former president and still a board member of the Norman Optimists Club. Since this whole thing has evolved, we've become the operator at Reeves Park again, once, many years ago we were, but now we're reopening, we are again. We still operate basketball programs at the Hangar, football programs, things like that. Just a little word about the evolution of this. Sometimes I wish Jason would stand up and defend himself a little more on this. But, but looking at this and hearing the concerns, one, I gather there are some valid concerns about the Norman Regional situation, and I'm not prepared and versed well enough to deal with that. But the way I looked at the evolution of this, since an MOU was given to Santa Fe, was that this was evolving to a point where some of us, within and without the city, felt like the city needed to come in and do some things to make sure this facility remained more a community-oriented facility. I may be saying some things people don't want to hear, but I don't think negotiations were going well from that standpoint. I don't think negotiations were going well from the standpoint of involving the community in tangible ways with the current operations moving toward the where they were. Since then, I've seen financial pro formas come out. I've seen budgets come out that I wasn't seeing come out. I've seen progress made with the Sooner Swim Club, the Norman Optimists Club, the community partners. And overall, I think this is part of an evolution to make sure this facility is a community facility, not an elite facility, and that the existing partners can still provide the programs they provided at their old facilities, their new facilities. Our rec centers can be freed up to be renovated. Our hangar can be freed up to be renovated and serve as more of a comprehensive facility for all Normanites. A lot of devil in the details still. And if Norman Regional's deal needs to be hashed out some more, I get that. I get that valid concern. But from the standpoint of where this is going, it is headed much more in the right direction, and we've got a lot more finality and a lot more progress on this than I would say we had expected to receive maybe three months ago.
Councilmember Holman?
Shu, I was actually very excited when I found out that the city, that we were going to take over being the operator for this facility. I was always pretty skeptical about contracting this out with an out-of-town company, even if it's just in Oklahoma City, still not in Norman. And if another company is operating it, how much control does the city have over what's going on? And so I'm very, like I said, very excited, very thankful that we are actually going to be the operator because of the public access aspect of it, which, having been around since the very beginning of Norman Forward, when we brought this to the voters in 2015, public access has been probably the number one piece of feedback we've heard from the public is guaranteeing that if we spend this much money, public money on a facility like this, the public will actually get to use it and that we won't get captured by, well, we need revenue to operate it, so it's just going to be tournaments all the time for out-of-town people. But I do agree, a lot of tournaments will be local people participating in them, local teams, local kids, local adults. So I think it's a real mix in that regard. And again, I am excited that we are taking it over as far as operation. The, can the agreement, can this agreement, can it be amended and when could it be amended? If we open the facility and six months or a year into it, we figure out that, well, it's not working the way we thought as far as time management or access, would we be able to amend this at that time to make adjustments?
Well, this document that we presented to you tonight is made to be amended easily. It doesn't have to, if it gets adopted tonight, it doesn't have to come back to council to be amended. So we can update it through part board, and this policy, there's a lot of directors give, or a lot of power given to the director, this set fees and, and community partners and whatnot. But to update this policy, it would just be a communication through the city manager along with a recommendation from part board. And we meet part board monthly. And I will say, there's a little bit of urgency from us on doing this, because we do have a lot of potential revenue hanging out there with these tournaments. We do need to sign contracts with these tournaments, make sure that we get these policies in place and get us moving forward, because we, we still think after this policy is updated, we still have to get our rental agreements ready to go. And it will be adjusted to whatever is adopted with this policy. But in short, this policy is made to be a living document that can be updated through the part board.
And with the Norman Regional Hospital space, will they be using that to treat Norman residents, athletes? Anybody that's using the facility, I guess, or? Could any Norman resident go over there and be like, I've, I was running last night?
Yeah, so it's just like any other hospital or a local doctor's office. They'll be officing out there, having clinics out there, or physical therapy, sports training will be all operated out there, and they do want Norman residents. I think that's their key market.
Okay. And you feel comfortable that, saying that during a tournament, so there's a basketball tournament, there will be court space available for the public to use, even if there's a tournament going on?
Depending on the tournament. So you always hear this reference of Easter Sunday. We do have Easter Sunday tournaments that are hanging out there where we have all eight basketball courts staking up on occasion. And there might be an occasion where we're having local leagues and all eight courts are being used. But that's not necessarily a bad thing. I'll, I'll remind everybody that we're going to be open, planning on being open eighty-five hours a week, starting at five-thirty a.m. So that means the facility will be open fourteen to fifteen hours per day. So we'll have a lot of access to it. And when we're talking about tournaments, those, mainly those tournaments will be hanging in around either on a Friday late day, if it's during school during summer, well, it might be an all-day tournament. Or on Saturdays, we're, we'll probably close a little bit earlier than we do during the weekdays, and those will go into, to the evening. So we'll still have plenty of open time for, for residents, and we'll try to keep as many courts open as possible, just depending on the tournament. But we'll give a lot of notice when those tournaments are coming.
And I would imagine that we would somewhat be limiting how often that happens, where they're all occupied at the same time?
Yeah, Easter Sunday is just kind of, they're going to happen, but it's not going to happen every single week.
And the general public, if they want to attend the YFAC to watch a tournament, is there an admission? Would they pay that admission that we saw?
Well...
If they're not going to use the facility, if they're just watching, or what is it?
It's another, another great question. So depending on what tournament it is, when we run out the tournament, they're going to have access to, you know, whoever's leasing a tournament will be part of their, their agreement where they can charge an admission charge. Now, the, for our members, if they're coming in there and there's two basketball courts, and they go in there and they're able to, to, the way we work right now, we have little RFID's that go in there and scan. At the pool, it'll be the same way out here, so they'll go in there and scan, and they'll get a basketball, and they'll be able to go in there and use the two courts that are open, or go into the swimming pool that's open. But so, but if they are coming to watch the basketball tournament that's being rented, it would be up to whoever's leasing the tournament if there's an admission charge to go along with that. But part of what we're working on, this community basketball league, which we haven't gone in depth, that we're working with the Optimists, that it is the Parks Department desire, along with the Trey Young Family Foundation, that when we're playing local leagues, no matter what it is, that there would be no admission charges. So that's a little bit different from the models that you're, you're kind of seeing right now, but we're working through that to make sure that when you're paying league fees or come out there to participate in a basketball or volleyball league, that grandma, grandpa, mom, and dad will be able to roll and watch their, their kids playing at no charge.
Okay. And just on a related, because some comments were made about, we don't own the Hangar, correct?
Correct.
That is a University of Oklahoma-owned building?
I believe so, yes.
I know that it, well, I should say, going back to the beginning of Norman Forward, the, what I had always heard from users of the Hangar and people that played in the leagues was that there is such a high demand for court space all throughout Norman that even with the YFAC, if it were to be built, we would still need the courts at the Hangar to, for overflow and other things going on. And at least in my opinion about it, I've always envisioned that there would be an investment made into the Hangar at some point. I mean, I think it's a very historic and unique piece of Norman, and there's not many like them around this state at all that I can aim. And I think there's only about six Navy buildings left in the whole city of Norman. And, but it being owned by OU, I guess that's kind of up in the air. But that's something we've talked about with the Norman Forward Two project, maybe, is the Hangar. And then we do still have Twelfth Avenue Rec Center and then Irving and Whittier Rec Centers as well.
Correct. So we do own those, Twelfth Avenue has two basketball courts. Whittier and Irving both have ones, and they are air-conditioned. That's happened within the last five or six years. But there are tournaments that I could see that we would need more than the eight basketball courts that are available. So we would have to work with the local school district. So we would have to work with the local school district, which we are, if you haven't noticed, we're partnering with them on the swim side and even to have middle school tournaments or their developmental league basketball out there for middle school. If you don't know in middle school, that they don't cut in basketball or volleyball at their basketball league. So it goes beyond a varsity or junior varsity team. So they have all these leagues that kind of roll under the, my wife teaches at Whittier, so I can, she gives me an update because she has to stay and work these games. There's, there's 85 boys' basketball players that want to play basketball at Whittier, and they don't cut any of them. So they want to make sure that they have space. So this extra space would be kind of a rollover where now they can come play at a place that's nicer than the rec center. And that's where Whittier plays right now. But yeah, there would be times where we'll need more gyms, but on our local leagues, I think this is plenty sufficient, especially combining with Optimists. The Optimists are, I think we're going to work with them to make sure practice places, practice is open. We still work with the school district, make sure everybody has a place to practice. And I think, I think when you're talking about gyms, the competitive space is not the high need, the practice space is where, where the high needs are.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
Hi, Jason. I just wanted a little bit of clarity. So how much taxpayer money is going into YFAC?
The, so if we do a little bit of math, so you, we have about a $42 million construction project going on right now. So if you take the $7 million out of that, along with the Trey Young donation, which is $4 million, that's subtracting $11 million out of that, so you're at about $31 million.
Okay, 31, okay. And I was kind of curious about the consequences of delay, and I was hearing a little bit in contracts with entities to do tournaments. Would this also delay opening, I guess?
This would not delay opening, but time, signing these contracts and letting us get organized on, between selling memberships or getting our staff in place and getting direction, there is a, there is a cost of time that goes along with that. And we do know that, we believe that the YFAC is probably, at the time, especially in the first couple of years, is going to be the nicest multi-sports competition gym for this type in the country. It's going to be very desired, but, but still to get these tournaments on the line, we're talking about Adidas, New Balance, MAYB. These are all large-scale tournaments that, that need confirmation that we're going to be able to have a place for them to play in next summer, and they're ready to sign the contract. Any delay on that would, I mean, we just run the risk of maybe losing the opportunity to have those in the gym.
Got it. I'm wondering if this is a yes and situation. It sounded like it could be where we could come back and revisit Councilmember Nash's concerns in a study session or oversight meeting?
Yeah, I think that that's all very plausible if, and I think that could roll from an oversight committee to a committee to part board to change that policy.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. As I was going to reiterate, that my only concern is with this policy and the missing sections there and that would safeguard the people. And I understand that it's a living, dynamic, breathing document that will take an infinite number of forms in the future. However, today, we were asked to place our stamp of approval on, on this policy. And this policy does not adequately protect the, the use of the facility for the people that are paying for it. And I don't, I don't doubt the benevolence of the city or Norman Regional or any of the operating partners. I just know that this is the policy that I have to put a stamp on, and this is a policy, a policy that I can't approve because it doesn't have that safeguard. And it's a simple, you know, two-week delay to add a sentence or two into the policy. I would be very surprised if any of our operating partners decided they would pull out over two weeks just to get this policy manual into a form that can be approved for the people.
Councilmember Holman?
Would it be possible for us to amend it right now to say it will be available to the public 85 hours a week?
Yes, I mean, you could add a sentence for the operating hours. My only hesitation is I think a lot of our open gym time, as far as open to the public to just come in and use it with the day pass or monthly pass, will be determined as we work out practice times with the Optimist Club and Sooner Swim Club and Norman Public Schools. Those entities will use, you know, more time at certain times of the season and things like that. And I know Mr. Olson's been working with them on that. And so I don't want to guarantee in the policy that it'll be open a certain amount of time and be wrong. I do think that as those agreements get solidified, we could bring that back so you guys would have some idea of what that's looking like. But that's really my only fear. I do think you could definitely amend it for, it's, we plan to be open 85 hours a week, things like that.
Yeah, there may not be a court maybe, but the facility, the public will have access to the facility guaranteed this much of the week.
Right. And I just heard-
Without getting too specific-
Councilmember Nash's concerns being more, can the public come in, not just come in, but come in and use it?
But use it, yeah.
Yeah. And so I think we'll have more information as we keep working with those partners, because I know they're trying to nail down the schedules and-
And a lot of that is not necessarily policy, but that's just kind of how we will go through and how we operate the facility. And that can, can be cleared up however you see fit. But we will, the facility will be open 85 hours in a week and we, I don't, we can figure out how much percentage of that could be open to the, to the public. I, I think that is more of an operations thing as we get closer to the facility opening and we get all, all these agreements, understand the schedule from our operating partners, because that's still kind of hanging out there as well as we, as we schedule tournaments.
Okay. We could consider, I guess, too, a minimum, like, we'll have tournaments and things, but some minimum hours will be guaranteed per week that there won't be a tournament or there won't be a, there will be court hours available, this minimum amount. That's something we might consider, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman?
What is the availability of our current facilities to the public versus being occupied?
That's a great question. So we are, especially out at Whittier and Irving, they are very limited bases. We are kind of at the mercy of the school. We can't open those rec centers for, for practice time or open gym time because we are, have to work around the school schedule and then their practice schedule. There's some weeks we have zero open gym time out there. And then, for instance, we've kind of shifted our model out of Whittier and Irving more to a childcare model, which we're very proud of, and trying to make, make sure that the, we have affordable childcare in town. But the, depending on that, we are, have certain DHS requirements because we are licensed, DHS licensed facility at those facilities, that we can't have anybody in the facility that is not having the background checks. Very limited at those current centers. The, the, we're not going to have childcare, we're not going to have to deal with school practices. I think that the majority of this time, that when we're looking at an 85-hour week, open to the public where we have swimming or, and gym time going on at the same time, we're going to be able to hit the majority of those hours on most weeks. Depending on holidays or large tournament times, or if we're in the middle of a junior jammer and Optimist basketball season, that might click down to a 60-hour week or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Just a second. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Asked in the motion to adopt the resolution passes by a vote of six to one, voting against Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 29. Conducting and closing a public hearing for consideration of an amendment fiscal year 2023, '24, City of Norman and Norman Utilities Authority operating budgets, creating an athletic facility special revenue fund and appropriating anticipated revenue. I need a motion to open the meeting, the public hearings.
So moved.
Have motion and second. Motion on the floor is to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast. Public hearing passes unanimously.
Do I get it back up there?
It's going to go away, I think.
I'm going to go away?
No.
I thought I had this thing mastered. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Anthony Francisco, the finance director. There were two major operations that were not anticipated or assured of when we adopted the budget back on June the 13th. One of them was the water rate increase that the voters approved on that day, and the second one was this city operation of the Young Family Athletic Center. So basically, what we're proposing to do here is to get those two major operations into the fiscal year '24 budget. What you see here is a summary of what was published in the paper, which is a summary of the, of the amendments themselves. There are three funds that are being affected. The newly proposed athletic facility fund, the water fund, and the Norman Forward fund. You see that this is the budget that was proposed by the Parks Department for the operation for the remainder of this fiscal year with a new special revenue fund. With all special revenue funds, we, we budget for a kind of a break-even operation with the hope that we will operate in the black, but revenues of $973,000 and expenditures of $973,000 for a beginning and ending fund balance of zero. So we hope that they will operate on a profit, and I know that they will certainly work towards doing that. The water fund budget is increasing revenues by a projected $3 million in this fiscal year. There are no increased expenditures because the expenditures were already built into the budget for those capital facilities. But you see, at the start of this fiscal year, that drew us down to agonizingly low projected fund balance at the end of this fiscal year of $86,000. So these revenues that we now anticipate to come in this fiscal year will build that fund balance to a more respectable level. And then in the Norman Forward Fund, we are proposing to allocate $80,000 for the Griffin Park, Parkland lease with the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health that was not included in the budget. So those are the things that are included in this athletic facility fund, water fund, and Norman Forward budget amendment. If I may speak off the topic of the amendment, this new operation we're taking on for all of us on staff, it kind of struck us in the face that we're taking on this new major assignment. Throughout the Norman Forward process, we had assumed that this would be a third-party operator. But taking it on in-house means that, and just speaking for myself, our Parks Department is good at this stuff. Okay, they run recreational facilities for a living. And, and I am confident that they will run this one better than, than Santa Fe or whomever else might run it as a third party. As relates to Norman Regional, Councilmember Holman talked about the, the kind of history of Norman Forward and as we move forward with these projects. I remember myself coming up to this podium with my limp. That is the result of my athletic prime playing in that hangar and injuring my ankle and not healing it properly. And I remember talking to the council about, wow, how great is this going to be that Norman Regional is going to co-locate a clinic in this facility? So if somebody twists their ankle like I did, they can just go upstairs and get it treated professionally and well. That was gravy to the project that was not anticipated when Norman Forward passed. So, so I don't think we should look that gift horse in the mouth. This is just me speaking. Because I have talked to you about this before, but my life experience has been that this will be a great addition to making this a unique national facility. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, anybody signed up?
We will start with Cheryl Landenso.
Thank you, ma'am.
Steve Ladner.
No comment.
Mary Francis.
The Mary Francis, Ward 7. Our mayor.
For a few minutes.
I, concerning the Norman Regional Hospital's facility and the sports facility that's being built by Norman Forward, I think that's great to have a clinic there. I don't think it's great to, for them to have that facility for themselves and not for us. I'm sure that if I twist my ankle and have to go into that facility, I'd see, they're going to charge me. It's not a facility that's a free facility, it's, it's a, a business. And they built a business there, and I think it's great to have it there. But not pay rent for 40 years? That's what, I've heard estimates from $30 million to $60 million of taxpayer revenue we could expect. And that's, I've seen the rental fees that we've had here in this discussion, the fees that are going to be charged, and, but not for Norman Regional. Why? Why not for them? I mean, they built the facility, it's for themselves. And if you get hurt, you'll pay for it, and it's great to have it there, and that you wouldn't have to be taken into some other distant facility. But yeah. 40 years rent-free. I hope you'll reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Wilson.
Paul Wilson, Ward 1. I actually agree with Mary Francis, 40 years of rent-free is ridiculous. I mean, for them putting $7 million in and I get hurt at the facility, go up and see the clinic, I don't know about you, but I've seen bills from Norman Regional, they're not cheap.
We're talking about the budget, not-
Yeah. But, I mean, the other thing, we're also talking about, it's also going to make $0 revenue. If I'm putting $30 million of taxpayer money in and it's going to go zero revenue, that's not a good investment. Any company wants to make money. And on top of that, you have other people in that facility that are going to be making money because of that facility. Not just the clinic, but one thing that has been left out is they have a retail space in there that's absolutely free of charge. So like, if I go in there and buy a pair of $170 tennis shoes, none of that goes back to us because I know half of, half the profit will go to Trey Young's foundation and the other half will go to another foundation. I was at that meeting. I mean, if we want this facility to make profit, we can't be giving away space for rent-free.
Cynthia Rogers. So it's always nice when you get revenues that you didn't anticipate, but you already had built in the costs. So yay for the budget director on that one. It's much better- It's much better, worse, I mean, we didn't know if the election would pass. And then in terms of the Norman Forward, right? I mean, that would have been operational expenses paid somewhere else. But I think, if I recall, and I should know this better, there was a built-in kind of subsidy to running that. So is that subsidy still in the budget? And is this on top of that? Maybe that's an Anthony question, I don't know.
Yes, part of the negotiations for the 2019 University North Park Tiff Project Plan included a subsidy, for lack of a better term, from the Tiff Fund to the operation of the pool portion of the athletic and aquatic center. So, yes, there is that subsidy in there. I neglected to talk about the utilities, which was questioned before. And, yes, utilities are a part of this budget. There's about $100,000 a year for electricity and so forth. And Norman Regional pays their portion of the utilities.
Stephen Ellis.
Stephen Ellis, Ward Four.
I was gonna ask you not to sit down, Anthony, because I had a slight...
Maybe you could just shout it out. We'll see if this makes sense. You know, I want a third, I guess. I'm the third person who's gonna raise this issue about the agreement with Norman Regional in budgetary terms. Like I said before, it's actually like better than we sometimes do, because they at least paid their margin for the build-out of the building. We didn't build them for it. But we are giving them pretty much all of the sort of cooperative surplus of their participation in this program. And I sort of learned a little bit more tonight that it's really on sort of concessionary terms, which was a little bit of a surprise to me. On just the budget number, and this was the question I was gonna ask, is, where are those, say, for example, utility numbers? So I don't see the $10 rent, for one thing, in the budget here. But also, which part of the budget projections in the revenues would count? Because we've got the rentals, and I assume that for other partners, their lease agreements are gonna determine how much they pay for utilities and stuff. But since, you know, we know we've got a lease agreement with Norman Regional, the contract does say they have to pay, and I just don't see where it's at. Like, what category is that under? That's a pedantic question, but, you know. I'm gonna hold mine up, so you can see it, too. That's just the budget projections.
Yeah, okay. Yes, those, behind these summarized figures are a lot of detailed figures. But for the question at hand, rental revenue is a line item. So swim club revenue is $50,000, basketball club revenue is $50,000, and so forth and so on. But there are line items behind these summarized revenues that council is privy to and the public is privy to in the packet. But again, it totals up to $973,000, both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. But as I said, with all special revenue funds, we budget for a net zero with the hope of making a profit. And certainly with the hope of not having to subsidize it from the general fund or from anywhere else. A lot of the discussion that the CFAB had with the Santa Fe contract was their concern with Santa Fe potentially making a large profit that would not go to the city. With the city taking this operation over, to the extent that the operation is profitable, then that becomes revenue to the special revenue fund that can be pumped right back into the programs of the facility or into improvements to the facility. So again, it's a net benefit.
Any final comments from council regarding this item?
Oh, sorry.
Now you're hiding.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor. Evan Dunn, 1400 Garfield Avenue. I wanna commiserate with Anthony, because when I think back on my basketball career, and I think about all the sliding, all the times I had to get the dust off of my shoes, I say, that's what kept me from going to the next level. Playing ball in the hangar when it was hot or when it was cold, and the suffering was immense. But I'm glad this next generation isn't gonna have that problem. I wanna support this and just champion everybody, you know, for the work that everybody's done to bring this forward. You know, it's gonna be awesome. Thank you.
I do have a couple more that I missed here. Chelsea Gravel. Harlinda.
Okay, so, any other comments from council? Councilmember Nash.
I just wanna clarify, is this, you know, this item is, to conduct the public hearing, am I correct, assuming this is not the appropriate time to break the seal on this topic from a council perspective?
I'm not sure what you're asking me, sir.
The budget here, this, you know, shooting for the net zero and not operating this facility to its full potential by skipping over, charging rent to $1.5 million a year in rent that could otherwise be going into a capital fund to help improve it and expand on, say, Olympic-sized swimming pools, offering free rent to more people in the city. But we're not. We're giving it away. We're giving away an asset of the city, of the residents of the city, in expectation that when we do need that money, we're going to go back to them and ask them to pay for it in taxes. I'm assuming this is not the appropriate time to break...
Yes, sir. Let me get out of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Now I understand your question. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Votes have been cast, and the public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a motion to adopt or reject the amendment to the adopted fiscal year 2023-24 City of Norman and City Utilities Authority operating budgets.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Don't we have a comment in there after the second?
Yeah, yeah.
I need a comment, because I... Councilmember Nash.
All right, thank you. So this budget's all well and good. It's weird that it balances out to precisely $973,065 in both the revenues and expenditures. By itself, that would suggest to me at least one of these numbers is nudged a little bit to make this, make the two balance to a net zero. But I think we're going in kind of the wrong direction in thinking that, you know, operating a city in a nonprofit manner should imply that we're non-positive revenue. Because we have an asset that we could make use of to improve the facility, does not mean that we should give it away to somebody else for free just to balance a budget to net zero. I think that we're giving away a lot of assets that the city could otherwise use services, that we're not always going back to the residents to ask them for tax increases, not asking them to sell bonds. If we have a reliable source of revenue in this athletic center, wouldn't that be a good thing for the city, for the athletic center, and to potentially, you know, really get it to the next level? Right now, it's the way it's designed. It's gonna be, you know, a fantastic facility that's unmatched by anywhere else in the state. It could be unmatched by anywhere in the country if we're actually treating this like a proper, you know, proper business, proper asset. That does not mean that we need to be charging the residents more. It does not mean that we need to be increasing the fees to the people that are gonna be using it more. It just means that we need to be charging the entities that we're renting the space to what the space is valued at. And at, you know, $60 a square foot per year, Norman Regional is, we're essentially giving them a $1.5 million a year in a facility that's anticipated to make $1.236 million in revenue. So half of this facility's potential is just being given away for, well, it's not being given away completely for free, because they are, Norman Regional is paying rent for that 40 years. They're paying $10 in total. But it just doesn't seem to make sense to me why we keep pursuing this net-zero and non-positive revenue model when we have the potential to operate our city so much better without always going to the residents to bail us out whenever we have budget shortfalls? I mean, how are we going to be putting together any kind of rainy day fund for the athletic center if we're at net zero? That, you know, perhaps we don't have as many people visiting it one year, because most of the time it's being spent, you know, in tournaments, Norman Regional's borrowing it or whatever. And then we've got a shortfall, then it's the general fund that has to supplement it, right? That's a problem. It's a problem that we can prevent by just treating these assets in a way as though they're our own, but we're not. And I think that that needs to change. And I know that this lease agreement's a done deal. There's nothing that we can do about it. It was approved back in June. But going forward, I hope council takes that in consideration on future projects, on future agreements, that we don't have to be giving away every single thing that's an asset that we can be charging people what it's valued at. Not the people, not the residents, but if we're renting out the space to somebody who's gonna be making a profit, we should be charging for it. And if Norman Regional didn't wanna take it, I'm sure we could have called Integris or Mercy. Any one of them would have jumped at this opportunity to have 25,000 square feet of clinic space above an athletic center for $10 for the next 40 years. Even if the $7 million that they're contributing is, was a great deal to build out their own custom space, what about the other $53 million? That could have been, that $7 million could have been covered in a four-year lease agreement where they're getting a discount of, say, $7 a square foot a year. But it's not. And so that's, that's basically just my perspective on it. I don't know if the rest of the council will share it, but it's a sticking point for me. Sorry.
Okay, so this is for our city attorney. You know my law degree comes from Google, so just a little clarity on this. Say at some point, you know, Norman Regional, they're stinking it up. It's not going well. Do we have an opportunity within the contract to buy them out, to buy that facility from? What could we do if we wanted to terminate that? How could we make that work? What if it's going so well? Really bulldoze it and put in more courts? Like, what are our options here?
I don't have contracts with me.
I know there are termination clauses in there, but I don't recall off the top of my head. Certainly, I think if we wanted to go a different direction, wanted to buy the hospital out, that's something we would have to talk to them about. It would be an amendment to this agreement. I know that's not contemplated in the agreement. And we know they have at least $10 million in, in terms of construction design and outfitting the structure. There are some default provisions in here in the contracts that could lead to termination, but I'd have to read it more closely and refresh my memory on that to know exactly what that would look like.
But there is a potential, should?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's all, all right.
Mr. Mayor, just a thought. The path we're on, it wasn't a decision made in June. It was actually a decision made in 2021 when we began to modify engineering records to include the space. So the concept of operating a recreation facility as an enterprise fund as opposed to a special revenue fund, absolutely something that can and should be considered. And I think it's just a conversation you have at the front end to say, what are the goals and objectives of this facility to the community? To say, to be self-sufficient as opposed to a break even is definitely a different proposition. But absolutely worth that conversation. We're operating the senior wellness and education facility, the adult wellness and education facility, in very much the same way. So if there is a change in philosophy of the council, we're happy to grab a hold of that and engage with you and our community in those conversations.
Well, a motion on the floor is to adopt the amendment, the amendment to the adopted fiscal year 2023-24 City of Norman and City of Norman Utilities Authority operating budgets. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote of six to one, voting against Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 30, resolution amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to remove property located at 1001 North University Boulevard from the Special Planning Area III designation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Is there a representative of the applicant that wants to present a motion? No, I don't hear one. Oh, Kyle. No? All right. There is no representative of the applicant. This is an opportunity for members of... Oh, I'm sorry. Are you the applicant? Would you join us down here at the podium, please, sir, and identify yourself? That makes more sense now.
Les White, 2016 Delancey Drive. Home address.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Would you like to talk to us about this land use plan, changing it at 1001 North University Boulevard from the Special Planning Area III designation?
Absolutely. So currently, we have Liberty Coin and Gold over on the west side, across from the mall, next to the UPS store and the IMart. We are building a manufacturing facility at 1001, and we wanted to combine those two things together, all under one house. So that's what we hope to do. And hope that everything works out well. Is there any questions?
Any questions from council? Okay, Councilmember Grant.
What will be manufactured in that building?
We will make big gold and silver bars into little gold and silver bars. And in the future, we will get coining machinery as well. So precious metals is our business.
Have you heard anything from surrounding neighbors about this?
Yeah, we've had really positive, you know, feedback from all the neighbors. We haven't had any negative feedback. We've been working on the building for a year now. We bought it last year in July. And so we've had an opportunity to talk to all the neighbors and have had really positive feedback. And of course, throughout the zoning process, you know, with the mailings and everything, we've had an opportunity to get some more feedback, and it's been positive.
Did you have to change anything? Or was all the feedback, you're good as is?
Yeah, yeah, everything. We have not had to change anything.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, has anybody signed up?
Cheryl Ann Dinsel.
So my question is, obviously, it's a smelting facility, right?
Sorry, can I say that again?
It's a smelting facility, correct?
We melt, but there is no fire. It's all induction premises.
Okay.
So it's all interior, it's, we essentially microwave the metal to melt it.
Okay, okay. And it's just going to be gold and silver?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
We won't do any platinum group metals or anything like that.
Okay.
Ma'am?
Thank you.
Okay, you, you have your.
He answered my question.
Yes, excellent, thank you.
Mary Francis. Cynthia Rogers.
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. Just at the very beginning, I, I, I want to say that I, that sounds like a perfectly fine thing to do on that space, and it's the, you know, I'm sure that it was city staff who suggested to you that you apply for a special PUD or small PUD in order to make this work. I wanted to comment on, on that, though. If you actually look at the SPUD ordinance, the application criteria is supposed to have something to do with getting a waiver from regular zoning requirements because there's something special about the place. So you're not supposed to be special design or special use or some sort of novel approach that's supposed to be something that is particularly beneficial for the community. And when you look at this SPUD, and I'm sure it's all done completely above board, so I'm not even saying, don't vote against this, or, you know, vote against this, you know, don't vote for it. But it's one of those things where we've sort of gotten in the habit of doing things just to get around zoning ordinances in a way that we really shouldn't have an off-ramp to. Ask me later why Norman has a SPUD ordinance. We were doing small PUDs when it was still illegal to do small PUDs. So I spent about a year complaining about that until the county attorney actually got on it and, you know, talked with the city staff. So we have this, and the wording is exactly the same.
You're kind of preempting yourself. I'm sorry to interrupt you, I realize that's true. We're going to talk about the, the PUD on the next question. This part's just removing it?
Oh, oh, well, I, I screwed that up, sorry. I, and I won't repeat myself, remember what I just said. Sorry, apologies.
Okay.
Evan Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. I support this, I, I think it's a, a great plan, and if you want to integrate some permaculture, I know what to do.
Thank you, Evan.
Chelsea Gravel. Harlinda.
I've had someone sign up, Rola Weber, but you didn't pick what item you were here to talk about, so I don't know if you're here, might be saying that wrong. Same with Diana Hutzel. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Diana Hutzel, Treville Crawford, didn't pick an item, you just put your name in there. Okay.
That'd be easy. Any final comments from council? Hearing none, the motion on the floor.
And the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
All right, 31. Ordinance number 0222345, rezoning property located at 1001 North University Boulevard from I-1 Light Industrial District to SPUD, Simple Planned Unit Development District. I will entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Motion and second.
This is a companion item to the previous item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered to this item?
Sherillane Dinsel. Mary Francis. Cynthia Rogers. And Stephen said he wouldn't speak.
I already know that order.
In the mail.
Evan?
Okay.
Chelsea and Colin.
Do I need to introduce myself first? Okay, I'm Chelsea Gravel, Ward 4. My question is going to be on the plans for the landscaping of the property and how the property will ensure the safety of the neighbors with everyone sleeping in the parking lot at the library currently. Thank you.
Okay, that is all.
That's all. All right. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast. The ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
10th day of October 2023, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified electors of said city, the question of the issuance of bonds of said city in an amount not to exceed the sum of 50 million dollars to be issued in series, to provide funds for the purposes of constructing, reconstructing, repairing, improving, and rehabilitating bridges in the city, including lighting, sidewalks, bike paths, landscaping, related drainage improvements, driveway reconstruction, and other related improvements, and levying and collecting an annual tax in addition to all other taxes upon all the taxable property in said city for the payment of the interest and principal on said bonds and declaring an emergency. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, ma'am.
Recognize Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works, just here to talk about a, the subject that is near and dear to my heart and many of our staff in multiple departments. We have, we have talked about bridges and worried about bridges and tried to find solutions to bridges for a very long time in this community, so we're thrilled that we get to advance this question to our voters. Just a few overview items that you, I think, have seen already, but for the benefit of the general public. I want to commend our communications department. Tiffany Verska and her team are working hard on our communication systems. We are ready to go if council approves this ordinance tonight. We already have a, a logo, we have a brand, we're calling it Bridge by Bridge, connecting our community beautiful brand with the bridge in an oval shape. So this is the, the Norman Bridge Maintenance Bond Program proposition. As you said, Mayor, the election, if approved tonight, the ballot ordinance is approved tonight, it will be on October 10th, so about two months away from now. If you're not already registered to vote, your, your deadline will be September 15th. For this election, absentee ballots, deadline will be on September 25th, and early voting days on October 5th and 6th. And on the right side of the screen is the proposition language that we believe will be on the, the ballot. This will be a single ballot, it'll be the only item on the ballot for that October election in Norman. As I mentioned, many, many years of buildup to this point, but recent years have been a little bit rough and a little bit telling. We've had four bridge failures in seven years. The first one was in September 2016 on Haven Brook Street, on the right side of the screen here on September 26th. I think it was a Sunday afternoon, I remember getting the call and saying, what just happened? The bridge dropped about three feet, three vertical feet, and the entire structure, the culverts underneath had, were gone. Fortunately, no one was hurt, and this one, we were able to close the bridge. That was a, a Ward 3 location. If you're, if you're seeing the picture, you're looking at Brookhaven Village there in the, in the distance. Then in August of 2018, after a council meeting, because I was driving home that night and drove up to this one, as well as Councilmember Castleberry, drove up to this one late one night after a council meeting, heavy rain, and the Main Street Bridge over Brookhaven Creek washed away. The culverts were separated, sticking out of the ground, one of the more scary scenes I've ever seen, but that came as a result of many years of preparing for trying to get that bridge replaced. In the off-road bridge was the next one in July of 2021 in Wards 2 and 4, and that happened on a kind of routine inspection of our staff. You can see on the picture on the left, our wing walls had begun to fall off, and there was a cavity under one end of this bridge, so that was in a serious condition. We closed that bridge and worked on it on an emergency basis over the next, I think, eight months to get that back in service. And we currently have one bridge closed, 60th Avenue Northeast, south of Tecumseh Road in Ward 5. In our routine annual inspections on that bridge, we discovered a hole in the steel beam in December, it was actually December 2nd. By the afternoon, we had the bridge closed, and it remains closed until we find funding for replacement. Norman has 80 total bridges. That's a lot. I was visiting, one of my mentors in the City of Ames, Iowa, I worked there 35 years ago, a couple of weekends ago, and I was telling him about this program, and he said, it's the City of Ames, Iowa State University College town, about 60,000 population. He said, you have how many bridges? I said, 80. He says, we have 13 in the entire City of Ames. So, so we have way too many bridges, just like we have way too many roads in Norman, but that's what you have when you have 190 square miles. Fortunately, only about 25% of those bridges, or about 20 of those, are in need of replacement or rehabilitation, and that's what this program will do. The other 60, we are watching closely, there will come a time when they need to be replaced, but not now, we think we can get some more years of life out of those. A little hard to see the map here, but this is the 18 bridge locations that we are proposing to address with this bond election if it is positive, positively approved. There are green and blue symbols. The green symbols on this map represent our 10 priority locations. These are the top 10 or 10 most needed bridges to be replaced or rehabilitated, and then we have the anticipated locations in, in blue. We, we fully anticipate or intend to address those next eight, they are the next eight in ranked order of condition. But the ballot ordinance only includes the 10 by list, and I'll talk about numbers here in a moment. We wanted to give ourselves a little bit of room in that budget in case there's an emergency in that 10-year period. If one of, if one of these bridges or another bridge fails, we're, we're hoping to have funding in this program to be able to address that instead of having another election or another fundraising effort to address that bridge. So we fully intend to do all 18, only 10 are listed in the ballot ordinance. You can see as well, these are distributed all over Norman, there is a predominance of these bridges in Ward 5, and that stands to reason because Ward 5 has the oldest bridges and probably the, the least well-constructed bridges, frankly, when it was part of the county many years ago. So the priority bridges, here's a list of those exact locations. Detailed cost estimates have been prepared by our team. We started with a third-party engineering outside firm to help us to evaluate the needs, whether replacement or rehabilitation was required, and then a very detailed evaluation of cost estimates. We have built into this inflation contingency, the cost of land acquisition, utility relocation, environmental assessments, and so on. We think we have it covered, I've said that many times over the years, and, and we do have budget challenges at times, but we think we really have this one covered. So those are your, your top 10. You'll notice it adds up to about 38.4 million dollars. There's a big one in there. If you look about halfway through that list, the North Porter Avenue project just south of Franklin Road is a 15 million dollar bridge. That is a big one. We don't, we don't spend 15 million dollars on very many bridges. This bridge is very low in elevation, it spans over a little river, and to, to replace it, we're going to have to elevate the entire row, the entire bridge, and extend the bridge for a much longer distance, making for a, a very expensive bridge. This has been about 60% designed already, and we're very comfortable with that number, but it does raise the, the total cost of those top 10. The rest of them are much more in the range of this list here. Yes?
I'm calling your friend here. I'm recalling 50s, 1950s, but I'll, I'll check my, my data here in a moment if I can. This second, let me go back to the previous. There we go. Want to mention, too, that we fully intend to address these 10 bridges in years one through five. This is a proposed 10-year program of construction, so these will be our top 10 locations in years one through five, so roughly two bridges per year being replaced or rehabilitated. We don't want to overburden our community, having a bridge out of service or under construction is a challenge, so we don't want to have five bridges under construction at one time, nor is it really practical from a standpoint of design and preparedness. So years one through five, the first 10, then moving to years six through 10, the remaining eight bridges, and you can see them listed here with the cost estimate, and notice in parentheses, they're replacing the bridge or rehabilitating the bridge. Again, 10 priority projects, eight anticipated projects. We, we believe we will address 18 bridges or more with this program, 50 million dollar total cost and a 10-year construction period. Couple of examples, and I have several others if you wish to really delve in, I didn't know if you needed to do that this evening, but these are two of the, of the examples that are on those lists. This is that 60th Avenue Northeast Bridge between Tecumseh and Rock Creek that is currently closed. This bridge was built in 1940, so we've gotten 83 good years out of it. I think that was way more than, than the designers and builders ever imagined, that you would have a bridge lasting 83 years. This is the bridge with the hole in the steel beam, and it's closed to traffic indefinitely. This proposal is a full bridge replacement, so this bridge will go away, be replaced with a new bridge. This bridge is also our lowest road, load-rated bridge in Norman. It has a sign on it, load rating four tons. Four tons doesn't allow an ambulance, it barely allows my F-150. That's a, that's a very low, low load rating. As we were out there, the day we closed it, a school bus came flying across that bridge, so no offense to Norman Public Schools, but not everybody reads the signs. This is why we have concerns about some of these old bridges. Putting up a sign, load rating, isn't really a great strategy when you have bridges in this condition. It's time to replace this one. The bottom number here is the reference to sufficiency rating. This is a federal term that we, the Federal Highway Administration developed many years ago. Think of it as a, as a grade or a score, on a scale of 100, this one gets a 27.2. The federal government and most cities and counties that, that go through this rating process every two years on every bridge in every city, we start looking seriously at the condition of that bridge when it reaches a 65 or less. 27 is a bridge that needs to go away. This, this is not salvageable, we can't fix it, we can't repair it, it needs to go away. This is a seriously compromised bridge, and, and rightly so, it is 83 years of age. Another example, more in the urban application, and this is more of a rehabilitation project. This is a bridge that no one probably ever thinks about driving over, even though you've probably driven over it 100 times, at the intersection of Lindsay and Classen. That red symbol there on the, on the aerial photo is a bridge. This is a bridge spanning Bishop Creek. Bishop Creek runs through the middle of that intersection, underneath that is a bridge that was built in 1951. Fortunately, this has a sufficiency rating of 53.7, which we have determined through detailed analysis is salvageable. We can salvage this bridge by working on repairs to the concrete and steel, and we can do it for about $350,000. So it just shows the, the range of conditions and situations we're dealing with. But these are just two examples of what is in your packet here. So just a, a quick summary here, if you approve the ballot ordinance tonight, this will be a Tuesday, October 10th, special election in Norman. It is a 50 million dollar bond initiative for bridges only. These dollars can only be used for bridge replacement or rehabilitation in Norman, and with the 10 priorities listed in the ballot ordinance. This is a 10-year construction schedule and a 20-year debt service schedule, property tax. This is an abhorrent tax-based program. For a $100,000 home in Norman, the increase in property taxes will be $2.44 per month. And of course, that will. and of course, that will increase with the value of the home. We've already built a website. Tiffany and her team already have a website, so normanok.gov, bridge-by-bridge, has an abundance of information. We're adding more. It seems like she's working around the clock. I'm getting emails at all times of the day to try to prepare for this campaign if you approve the ballot ordinance tonight. We're going to give it everything we got. We're going to leave it on the field for the next 60 days to try to get this information out to our general public and our voters, and we're hopeful for a positive election on October 10th. I'll stand for any questions if you have.
Why are we just now learning about these, the issues with these bridges?
Sir, we're not just learning. We've been having conversations with council for years. We actually inspect our bridges every two years and provide that report. In some cases, we've accelerated that to one-year inspection, so not a new conversation, certainly with council. I think this is a new conversation to provide a large funding source, a bond issue in this case, for a large replacement program. That's a conversation that we've had tentatively with council. I suspect when the mayor was on the street division staff, we were talking about that 20 years ago, but this is really the first time that we've, I think, gotten serious about identifying how many bridges really need to be replaced, how many need to be rehabbed, and what would that cost. So I think that's what's new about the current situation.
So we've known about these for a while. Why haven't they been placed on the street maintenance bonds?
Street maintenance bond is for street maintenance only. Those are, bridges aren't allowed to be used for that, for those dollars, so that wasn't something that we could have if we wanted to. We have brought forward a few bridges over the years that were in pretty critical condition. I mentioned the Main Street, West Main Street Bridge. That was on the 2012 bond election that council approved. The Franklin Road Bridge was on that bond election as well. So as bridges have gotten into critical condition, we certainly have always brought those forward. There probably were some that council approved for major maintenance. In the last five years, councils increased the budget for maintenance of, general maintenance of bridges from $100,000 five years ago to a million, a million two or a million three this year. So we've been sort of building to this point, I think, for a number of years.
So we could have put them on the street maintenance bonds?
No, sir. Street maintenance bonds can only be used for street maintenance, not for bridges.
I thought you just said that we had some on the 2012 bond issue. Was that, did we not have a bridge on it?
We refer to that as a transportation bond program, so there was eight projects. Two of them were bridges. The other six were roads. So yes, council could have asked us to do this any time before now. It just hasn't happened.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I was on the council in 2018 when we first approved the, our city's first-ever bridge maintenance program, I guess, and, you know, better late than never, I guess, but $100,000, as you mentioned, is what we started out with, and we've been increasing it year after year. But even with that, based on the total amount that you've identified, it would take decades to ever save up enough to do just these projects. And I think some clear, maybe some further clarification about, we currently have a street maintenance bond program that gets renewed every five years, or I should say, has been renewed by voters every five years, starting in 2006, if I recall, and that program is just, as you mentioned, to rehabilitate, repave, and sometimes reconstruct neighborhood streets primarily. And then we have another bond program that I refer to as the street enhancement bond, and that one is where we see the big projects that include widening streets or building brand-new streets. And in 2012, I do recall that those two bridges that were included in it, and those were just two bridges by themselves, but that program included a new bridge over Imhoff Creek on Lindsay Street, and probably, I imagine there's a culvert or two on 12th and Cedar Lane as well. So I know that project included some, but if I recall, as you mentioned, on the street maintenance bond program, it can only be for neighborhood streets and not for reconstructing new bridges. So I think that's part of what kicked off council interest in, well, should we put, should we support a separate bridge maintenance bond program to specifically and only address the bridges in Norman? And you mentioned Norman's abnormal size. We're the 45th, last I checked, 45th largest city in the United States in land area. Norman and Tulsa are the same size in land area, if you just want to have a comparison. They have 400,000 people, and we have 130, so they have a much larger tax base to address their infrastructure needs, I guess. Not sure how well they're doing it either. But you mentioned that when Norman, years ago, when the lake was constructed and Norman annexed all the land around the lake, what was previously county responsibility then became the city's responsibility when it comes to all the streets, all the bridges, basically all the infrastructure out there now became our responsibility. We've talked about this before. Is there any federal or state funding that's available for bridge maintenance? There is for streets, but...
Thank you, Councilor. I failed to mention that, that while, if this goes forward, we certainly intend to apply for every federal funding opportunity. We did get federal funding for the Main Street Bridge and the Franklin Road Bridge in the previous bond election, and it's out there, but frankly, we have pursued several of those in recent years and have not been successful. We also have a very robust transportation bond program that requires federal matches as well, the 2019 program, particularly in the 36th Avenue Project from the 2012 program, and those tend to be our priorities to the ACOG STBG federal funding program as opposed to bridges, although bridges could be applied for, through that program as well. So suffice to say, we're going to pursue every outside source we can, but as you said a moment ago, there will never be enough federal funding to do 18 or 20 bridges in Norman. It's just, it's never going to happen in a period of time that's reasonable.
And there's no yearly allocation from the state or federal government to cities for bridge?
No, sir. It's not automatic. It's a competitive program in metro Oklahoma City.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will start with Cheryl Ann Dento.
I am somewhat familiar, Cheryl Ann Dento, 2925 Redwood Drive. I am somewhat familiar with federal grant monies, and it seems to me that it's kind of a squeaky wheel thing. You have to have a really strong, strong federal aid grant coordinator within the organization seeking funds. Do we have that? Does the city of Norman have a strong federal aid grant coordinator that's seeking the federal dollars? We don't.
Ma'am, you can't ask him questions. You can't ask his questions.
Okay. Okay. So I, okay, my comment would be to seek somebody who can do that work exclusively because it's a squeaky wheel thing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Steve Ladner.
Yes?
Robin Schrader. Mary Frances.
This is a good deal. It's been needed for a long time, and it's just desperately needed. I, the idea of a school bus coming across that bridge that was put up there and not making it with children, that's a scary idea. $50 million, and it'll be well-spent. I would urge the council to consider the fact that we could recoup that $50 million of taxpayer money that we'll be paying over the next 10 years if we weren't giving away 40 years of rent.
Cynthia Rogers.
Hard to follow that. I'm absolutely 1,000% in support of funding basic infrastructure that supports the city because I'm an infrastructure kind of person. I see that as an important function of the city. That being said, this isn't like a surprise that we've had bridges in disrepair and that they needed funding. We've been talking about it a long time. We were talking about that before we, you know, put the Norman Forward Projects forward to build, I don't know, put $31 million into a sports facility. I think our priorities are a bit out of whack in how we do things. Hopefully, we'll do better forward, going forward. However, my concern with this is a general concern about if this ordinance is approved tonight, this will be the fifth special city election this year. October 10th will be the fifth time we'll have a single item for the city on a ballot, and in fact, October 10th will be the eighth election in Norman this year. January 10th was the ONG franchise agreement. February 14th were the Ward elections. April 4th was Ward Five election in public schools. May 9th was a special election for the hotel guest tax. June 13th was a water rate election. September 12th will be the ONG franchise agreement election, and October 10th then will be the bond election. So you can see what these look like. The franchise agreement discussion for ONG, not the other one, not the other guys, started on June 20th. At the session, there was a discussion that September was an open date. I take offense to that. We want people to vote. We shouldn't be having single-item elections, and at that time, we knew the bridge bond was coming up. There's absolutely no reason these things couldn't be combined so people could be more informed and have more reason to show up to vote. On June 27th was the first reading, and July 11th, so we're talking, from June 20th to July 11th, was the decision about when to schedule the ONG franchise election. This was intentional. You could go back to the city council study session and see that that was an intentional decision. So my questions are, what's the rationale for continuing this habit of single-item special elections when we, when items are flexible and we know about these things in advance? Question?
Let me pick up where Cynthia left off. Being the eighth election, and of course, we'll have November elections in the state of Oklahoma as well. I'm not sure whether they have any state offices. Maybe we won't this year. That's a good question. 2023, that's a good issue. But spreading out the elections really does make it seem as though the council is mostly interested in depressing turnout to people who have particular kinds of interests, and it's not a very good way to run a city where you're asking people to do things and you're asking them to get behind things that you need to persuade them to do. So that's finishing up Cynthia's point. I want to make just a slight other point, which is to say, I'm very glad that this sort of funding is the kind of funding that we do through bonds because that gives Norman a little taste of the property tax pie, which is something that we don't have before, and property taxes, even though lots of people in Oklahoma hate them, are really actually pretty fair because they're functionally wealth taxes. They're not progressive, which is a problem, but they're progressive in the sense that the percentage of tax paid is higher for people who have higher wealth. So I think that's a good thing. It will be interesting to see how the benefits of the various bond proposals spell out. Since we just got the list tonight, I haven't had a chance to look and see what's going on. I'm sure there's a strong points town in here about how freaking expensive infrastructure gets when you let it sit for a long time. So thinking about going forward, these other bonds that we have, transportation bond and the street bond, we should remember that there are bridges attached to these things, and they're darned expensive. So there are lots of lessons to be learned about, you know, sort of how to run the city that are based on the questions that get raised by a potential election here. Hope we'll all reflect on some of those. Thanks.
Evan Dunn.
Thank you, Council. I want to associate myself with everything that Cynthia and Steve just said. I would support this. $50 million for bridges. We need more, but could we not get a couple million dollars for some sustainability incentives? I don't know. That'd be nice.
Chelsea Gravel.
Mayor, Council, I am Chelsea Gravel, Ward Four. I would like to quote an article from the Oklahoma titled "New Roadways Ready for OU Game Traffic." It's probably unfair to say this state revolves around the University of Oklahoma football team. There are some, say, other things to do on a Saturday afternoon besides getting behind an endless Crimson and Cream caravan heading to the Memorial Stadium in Norman. All the roads going into Norman will be completely open to traffic for the first time since, first time for Saturday's game. So football fans driving north on I-35 towards Norman will be able to exit onto highway, onto State Highway Nine from the interstate, something they couldn't have done last week. Also, from the I-35 north onto Lindsay Street. Another route available this year is the US-77 North from State Highway Nine onto the intersection of 12th Avenue Northeast, part of the Norman ongoing 12th Avenue Loop Project, which has taken motorists to Lindsay Street. OU Police Capital Neil Stone said officials hope football followers will take advantage of all available routes to avoid congestion and the traditional crawl down Lindsay. But when the State Department of Transportation approved a contract last year to replace a bridge over the South Canadian River, just a mile south of Norman, on Interstate 35 from two major access roads to the stadium, a, so sorry. Yes, sir? This is going to be the bridge that's by the duck pond. I'm assuming that even more damages were caused due to motorists not being able to exit correctly from the I-35 highway as they planned on creating more ways to get to this, to the stadium. That's all. Thank you so much.
Carlinda Gravel.
I'm going to start by saying that I don't know much about your budget, but I know a lot about mine. I am for us rehabilitating and replacing our bridges. What I don't understand is part of this money could be paid in other ways that is be using for other resources. So I am a homeowner. You know, I had an intruder. I had to buy about 30 feet of eight-foot chain-link fence and 10 posts. Prior to that, I had to put in security cameras. So right now, we're looking at... I had to put in security cameras. So right now, we're looking at bridges and we're looking at replacing and rehabilitating those bridges. We're looking at a lot of money. Most of this money is not in my budget. However, in taxpayer money that is being spent by the city, there is a facility here in Norman that is moving forward to cost us $2.2 million of tax money. That could be put towards our bridges that our homeowners are having to pay for. $55,000 a month right now is to support a facility in the same way. And when you multiply that by 12, you get $660,000. I'm assuming that the new facility, which will be double the size, is going to cost $1,320,000 a year to support that. So when we look over a 10-year span, I'll let you do the multiplication. There is money that is being spent, taxpayer money, citizens' tax money, without a vote of the people, that could go towards fixing these bridges that we desperately need to repair, instead of all of it coming out of taxpayer pockets and property owners when we are already struggling to keep our property and our life safe. Thank you.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast. The ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the emergency section 8. It's emergency because of the time, am I correct, Mr. Francisco, the time on procuring a bond for this item? So I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the emergency section 8. Reject the ordinance on final reading.
Approve.
The motion in seconds on the floor is to, and the motion is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 33, a resolution giving the Secretary of the Cleveland County Election Board a notice of special election to be held on October 10th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second, motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Just a second. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. This is the idea for miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address City Council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three. Do we have anybody signed up for miscellaneous comments?
Yes, mayor, we do. We'll start with Diana Hutzel.
Good evening, Diana Hutzel, Ward 5. Tonight's about perspective. Many Oklahoma cities grew between 2000 and 2021. Norman grew 32%. Edmund grew 39%. Broken Arrow, 44%. Broken Arrow and Edmund grew more rapidly than Norman, but still managed to maintain lower crime rates. Edmund, 24 points lower. Broken Arrow, 22 points lower. Oklahoma City grew by 180,000 people during that same timeframe, but crime did not. In fact, as you can see from the chart, based upon OSBI data, crime went down significantly. This is to show increased population does not mean that more crime is a given. But if we in Norman are unable to remove the criminal element from our city, then more population will likely breed more crime. OU's entrance into the SEC is expected to increase OU's enrollment by 87, 8,700 students. A Norman Economic Development Coalition forecast predicts Norman's population will hit 150,000 by the year 2030 census. That's more than 20,000 permanent residents less than seven years from today. Norman needs a fully manned police force to control its crime. Norman City Council made national news in 2020 for defunding its police department by $865,000, a loss of nine officer positions. Two years later, council reallocated that funding back, but the damage had already been done and the stigma attached to Norman that it does not support its police force. Why do I mention this now, given the recent budget increase to the Norman PD? Because I believe this stigma still continues to be one of the challenges Norman PD faces in its recruiting efforts. Were it not so, then was Norman PD defunded would not be the number one frequently asked question on the join the Norman PD website. Were it not so, then I believe Norman Police Department Academy applications would be up instead of significantly down. The Norman Police Department Academy hasn't seen a double-digit graduation ceremony since its defunding in 2020. This past February, there were only three graduates. Last October 4, the October before that, seven. Based upon available data, the average police officer vacancy rate for the Norman PD is 19 this year. Last year's average was also 19 vacant positions. Every police department is not experiencing hiring problems. Oklahoma City Police Department graduated 32 recruits last week and has 25 in academy now. Broken Arrow PD just graduated 10 recruits last week. They're currently in overhire status. More police than positions to counter attrition and have publicly stated they will do whatever it takes to stay that way. During the next two years, communities surrounding Oklahoma City will face stiff competition as OKCPD looks to hire 215 officers. Their starting salary of $61,700 is almost $5,000 more per year than Norman's, and OKCPD is offering a $10,000 hiring bonus to each officer. This is serious competition. Norman needs to be competitive to retain its current officers and attract new recruits. We need to work on national media advertising to let the public know that the defund the police movement is no longer supported in Norman and to let the officers in anti-police communities know that they have a place to come where they will be supported. Happy to provide the websites for my data. Thank you so much.
Sherilyn Dinsel.
Sherilyn Dinsel. I live in Ward 6. Own property in Ward 4. It was recently published that, in a major news organization, that Portland, Oregon, that's in Oregon County, within the last two years, I think, lost the equivalent of $1 billion in funding from the outflow of residents and big employers like Walmart. And the actual downtown city is left a virtual shell because the residents no longer enjoyed a quality of life because the amount of people that had come and moved there without housing. It seems the residents of Portland thought by giving people places to stay along the streets or opening shelters was a fix. And what it did was just attract more of the same. And the people that were paying the taxes and working and living their lives decided to run and get out. I would hate for that to happen to our lovely city. Thank you.
Alex Lanfier.
Alex Lanfier, Ward 2. I just want to make a comment on the 718 North Porter location for the proposed temporary shelter. I just want to say that I'm in favor of it. I want to thank Councilmember Holman and Councilmember Grant for correcting some of the misconceptions that have been going around lately. Yeah, I think it's a step in the right direction. I don't think it's the final solution. I think we need a permanent shelter in Norman. This problem's not going to solve itself. People are going to be wandering around downtown until you give them a place to stay. I also want to say that I don't think it's a sustainable solution to encourage your neighbors to get homeless people arrested. I don't think that's going to solve the problem at all. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Steve Ladner.
Steve Ladner, Ward 4. Wanted to applaud the mayor and Councilman Nash for going on a walkabout with the merchants in downtown area and talking to them and hearing what their problems are. You can't solve a problem if you only look at one side of it. So I applaud you for going to the homeless shelter, but I would encourage you to talk to the merchants, find out what their issues are too. There's a lot of discussion about hearing the population and hearing us and everything. What I don't think you're hearing is, three years ago in August, we defeated the, we had a bond issue for a permanent shelter. That was defeated by the voters. Since then, we've spent $1.6 million. We're looking at 718 North Porter. We've already got $500,000 into that. To get to completion, that would be another $1.5 million. It's a huge amount of money. There's only so much money for all the other things we need in this town. As the man talked about, it's maybe not the solution, but you've got to understand both sides of the problem to find the proper solution. And I think that's a big problem with what I'm seeing. I've lived here 46 years. You can't just go on ideology. You've actually got to be a problem solver. You guys are all elected officials. You represent roughly 16,000 people. Solve some of the problems. You've got to look at both sides. In regards to 718 North Porter, that's right next to Tara Mahara's restaurant. That will ruin his business. He already has had to put in $100,000. Homeless are sleeping in his patio area. He had to enclose that. Every day, he cleans up human waste, waste in his parking lot. He's had customers assaulted in the parking lot. He's had to chase homeless people out of his property. It's not a homeless problem. It's a human problem. Many of the people have mental illness or drug addictions or both. You've got to look at the whole spectrum. It's not just putting people in houses. This man started the business, and I don't have any say. I like to go to Tara Mahara's. It's great. I've always admired how hard this guy works, but I don't own any of it. I'm not a friend. But he started it 23 years ago. He employs 50 people. He pays over $620,000 in sales and liquor taxes every year to the city of Norman. And the city of Norman's solution is to come and put a homeless shelter next to his business and destroy his business? If you guys do that, and let me repeat that, $620,000 in taxes every year. I've heard all night how we're deficit and we're giving things away, and now we're going to destroy a guy that's worked his tail off to build a great business, something people from out of town come to. That's inexcusable. It's wrong in so many ways, morally, fiscally. It should never happen. And I'll tell you what, if that does happen, what business would ever want to come to Norman? That's how you treat a person that works their tail off, builds a business, is successful, and you destroy his business? There's got to be better solutions.
Thank you, sir.
Robin Strater. I don't think I saw her come in. Sam Beuth.
I'm Beuth, Ward 5. Thanks, Mayor Heekula and Nash, for walking around and speaking with some residents of Norman. You know, I just want to say, you know, it's okay to help people, but not at the expense of others. There's a fine line between compassion and enabling. I've seen parents that will drain their life savings trying to save their child, and in the end, they're broke, and the child ends up in prison or dead. The good thing about Norman is that we have, there's plenty of 12-step programs around here that some of these addicted people can go to. You know, everybody's looking for a, a solution. You know, I'm, I'm, there's one. Let's, let's, let's get some of these people in those programs and, you know, maybe they can get some help. You know, let's hold them accountable. You know, if I, if I hit somebody, I'm going to jail. If I steal something, I'm going to jail. And, you know, some of these people, they need, they need to be held, you know, to the same, same standards that we are. There's a lady downtown, she worked at a restaurant. She got hit in the face by an unhoused person. I know your daughter's here, so I'm not going to go into graphic detail on another person that was seen doing something obscene in front of a business, you know. I think that, you know, people have been coming up here for weeks and expressing their concerns. And, you know, statistics are a pesky thing, but they're, man, it is what it is. I hope you're listening. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Francis.
Mary Francis, Ward 7. Yeah. And we do have a problem and we need solutions. And the, the problem is that there are human beings who have no place to sleep at night and no place to bathe or get clean drink of water or, or all the things that you and I have. There was a claim made last week. When I came down, it was hard to believe that, that they made that claim because there's no way you can figure it out. There is not, there are no statistics on this. About that 50% of the homeless people are either drug addicts or addicted to a substance, or they're criminals. There's no data on that. But there is data on, on how many homeless have been arrested. I believe that Dan Stron of the Homeless Alliance said that 76% of the unsheltered population has spent at least one night in jail or in prison. And I totally believe that because I know that when another former councilman was here, she spoke frequently about how the police were always arresting people or breaking up their camps and, and that sort of thing. It's, it's sicking the police on the, on the homeless is not really helpful. But whenever you consider the people who have shelter, who are in food and shelter, people who are already in that program of, of homes first, housing first. Housing first works. And when you add that group to those people who have been arrested, then the number drops to 25%. So housing first is the solution. We have the solution here in Norman. It's not enough. We only are able to afford a small portion of that with what the City Council has been providing. The City Council needs to provide more funding for people who need housing. When they get evicted, I mean, the rents are going up. People are, whole.
Timeout, ma'am.
Marguerite Larson.
Marguerite Larson, Ward 6. So I recently read an article about the Oklahoma City metro area, which includes Norman, is 20th in the nation for eviction notices, eviction notices. Why? Because people can't pay the rent. People can't pay the rent. They end up on the streets. I really believe that there are, Norman should keep that shelter at 718, provide housing for people. And what I have also learned is that there are several cities across the nation that have been doing this, where people, the city has been buying buildings. They have been buying old hotels, renovating them and giving them services. So for example, in Dallas, they have a thing called Austin Street Center, which provides safe shelter and meets the basic needs of the most safe shelter and meets the basic needs of the most vulnerable, which is basically you're unhoused. And also, I, it could also include your veterans. It's a 24/7 shelter, and during the day, it's a service cha-, it's a service center. So it's giving people needs, services, helping them get back into a society, giving them help, helping them to learn skills. So I really believe that Norman needs to step up, keep its commitment to 718 North Porter. Thank you.
I apologize in advance if I, um, mispronounced the next name. Satara Richter-Ado?
Satara Richter-Ado, Ward five, born and raised. Um, pronouns are they, them, or he, him. You'll have to forgive me for having my phone, notes on my phone. I am not yet an experienced public speaker. Um, thank you, Councilman Nurbal and, uh, City Manager Pyle for the comments addressing the pantry situation. Um, the community at large has been alarmed and confused about the sudden removal of the O'Kerr's pantry that had been around for two years prior. I'm aware that it has been returned and will stay until August 14th. I'm a resident who refills that pantry and others, and I've had encounters of people thanking me, blessing me, even hugging me with consent for the single act of providing such a small quantity of nutrition. These are not people who are ungrateful. I'm sure you know that, but it bears repeating. I hope the process of permitting policy is quick due to the urgency involved. Thank you also, counsel, for the comments on the unhoused before the consent docket. It is important to prioritize the facts, and I'm looking forward to the city and Norman Police Department's statistics on homelessness, and I suspect corrections to some of the rhetoric thrown around. We are all interested in solutions, as we've heard countless times tonight. Homelessness is a reality of a, of a town this size. All solutions start with shelter. No solutions work without stability. How are we imagining options like 12-step programs without a place to return? Back on the streets? No solutions work without housing first. Thank you for your consideration in the context of your complicated work.
Paul Wilson.
Hey, counsel. Uh, Paul Wilson, Ward one. Um, I have basically a couple of stories to tell you. It kind of centers around everything we've been talking about in miscellaneous. I'm not going to use the person's name because I told him I wouldn't. Um, it's in regard to shelter. This is from 2017. Something should be done to help them. My eldest brother was one of them. He wasn't allowed to stay at the shelter at the coldest night of December 2017. Later that night, he died. My brother and I had to identify him. He had frostbite on his lips and nose. So think about that, what you say about these people before spewing hate. These are people's family, members that are struggling. It said, "You guys can do better. We can do better." And then she, this person continues on, identifying your loved one is something that is burned into your mind forever. Identifying a loved one is probably going to be the hardest thing you'll ever have to do, and I hope nobody has to do it under these circumstances. The other story is rather really disturbing. So this is in regards to Tara Mahara. We were refused service because we have a service animal. She is trained to alert when a life-threatening situation arises. We entered the restaurant, and we were told we could not bring our service animal in. I explained that she was a service animal. The manager said she could not, she could only do what the owner told her to do. I tried to explain it was a violation of ADA to refuse service. She said, "We do not follow the law. We follow the owner, what the owner says." At that time, we left. A couple of days later, we returned to clarify that our service animal was not allowed to accompany us in the restaurant. We thought it might just be a misunderstanding. A person who identified himself as the owner, Efren Romero, said he was not, sorry, I lost my place. He was not allowed, a service animal in his restaurant, explained that this was a federal law by the United States government. He said, "The government does not tell me what to do. I own the business and, and will do what I please. Because of this actions and attitude, I have no choice but to file an ADA complaint." Basically, they wanted to make people aware. This is, this happened at Tara Mahara. That is unacceptable by any means. ADA compliant, service animal cannot be refused under any circumstances. It's a federal law, and I'm ashamed of Tara Mahara now. I used to like going there. I'm going to tell you right now, I will never set, step, set foot in that place ever again. Shelter's help. I am in support of moving the shelter to 718. The more people we can help, the more people we get off the street, the more people we can get into, to help them get off the street. Thank you.
Hannah Anderson. Russell Rice.
How you guys doing today? Let me pull it up. It's on my phone as well. Uh, I just want to say some things straight. Oh, yeah. Russell Rice, Ward two, private citizen. Uh, let's see, where's that? Last, uh, meeting, it was said that the point-in-time count only counts individuals that are sheltered. We have no idea how many live in camps. That is untrue. Point-in-time count is public. Anybody can read it. Just ask, uh, Heidi Smith for if she's happy to send you a copy. Um, point-in-time count done required twice, point-in-time count is required to be done twice a year. Uh, I'm sorry, once every twice, once every two years. Uh, Norman and OKC do it once a year. So that's actually one, one time more than required by law. Just saying. Um, there's one more nice little fact down here. Oklahoma City Police can bring people to Norman after they've been released from jail. Oklahoma City will only pay for transportation out of OKC if the person released from jail can prove they have stable housing at its destination. That is the same process that every other nonprofit who sends people places use, uses. We have to make sure that there are people at the locations, a support system when we send people on a bus somewhere. If not, we're just blindly sending people across the country, and that's not okay. Salvation Army does not require people to go and get a proof they're not a sex offender from Norman PD. They just literally have to show any form of ID. Like, the first page of their medical records works. Um, let's see, there's one more thing here. No city in American history has arrested their way out of homelessness. Think about that. Not a single city has managed to do that. Do you think we're the first that's going to manage to do it? I don't think so. I don't think our police department wants to do it. So, uh, once again, I'm sorry to have to fill up your miscellaneous comments, but if we don't, they do. So, in support of 718 North Porter, have a good day. Thank you very much.
Cynthia Rogers.
Uh, still me. I'm going to finish my comments from earlier. So, um, eight elections we've had this year so far, and tonight, you used an emergency clause to make sure that we had a single item election in September and October. So I don't think that is, um, I think that's disingenuous. I don't think, I don't know how that actually improves civic engagement or encourages people, uh, to vote. Um, I guess I have a question. Maybe Stephen Holman can answer this one. What's the most suspicious elections Norman has ever had in a calendar year? I mean, are we at a record high? I, I think we should stop that. But mostly, I want to talk about homelessness. Um, I found this book. It's in the Pioneer Library System, has it on an ebook, so everybody can get it because unlimited, um, downloads. This book tells us lots of good stuff about research and what's happening in other cities. We're not going to lick homelessness because it's a housing problem. It's not a problem we can fix. Um, but what we can do is we can think and think with compassion, but also think with reason about, um, the costs of homelessness. We can all agree, people sleeping on the street and defecating in restaurant and commercial places and public places is nothing any of us want. Um, and the question is, how do we take care of that? Like, how do we fix that? How do we, um, enable that? And the only real solution is to give police, people places that they can be that aren't where we don't want them to be, where there are spillover effects. So the cost, we, we don't talk about, but there's lots of costs of not providing housing to people. ER visits, fire, police, the fear that we might have when we encounter people, the guilt that we have when we see them, the guilt that people live in that condition. These are all costs that we have, that we don't talk about, we should talk about, um, but just saying, don't help people. And then in this book, there's a study that in study after study, the most effective treatment for homelessness is housing. That's it. But just housing without support isn't really going to help a lot of folks. Some people just need a place while they get themselves together. Some people, particularly single individuals, they need support. Maybe they have mental health or physical or addiction problems, but you can't force that on people. It's also shown not to be effective. Um, so I hope we can come together as a community and understand people's concerns, um, the impacts that it ha-, that, um, this community, the community of homeless folks has on others and on themselves, and these, and understand that these folks, when you-
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. Um, I was going to say something tonight about the role that fear's been playing in our discussion of Norman's unhoused community, and I still will, but I was reminded during what we just listened to that actually a lot of the discussion that's going on is actually driven by indifference to human suffering. The idea that Norman should spend zero money on the unhoused population who is suffering desperately right now is not an alternative to solving issues related to people who are unhoused. It's just deciding to not take care of some of our fellow citizens. But I do want to say, um, I want to talk a little bit about housed people and their relations to unhoused people tonight. Uh, several speakers tonight have said that's what we should do, so let's look at it for a minute. A subset of housed people seem to be very worried, and not in a concerned kind of way, but in a fearful kind of way, about where unhoused people are, where they hang out, where they sleep, where they might be during the day. Uh, and that should strike all of us as sounding strange because it's not the kind of thing that we normally worry about, right? We don't worry about where all the redheads are right now, or we don't worry about where all the middle-aged men hang out. We worry about where the unhoused people are. So what's the distinction? Well, the distinction's pretty clearly fear. You've heard it tonight. Many people are afraid of their unhoused neighbors. They see them as a threat to either their persons or their property. So, um, I think we have to, uh, think about this in a kind of public policy way. Um, I don't doubt that that fear is real, but I do doubt that that fear is justified, something that has been spoken to tonight, and I'll return to it below if I have any time. But I do think that the whole issue concerning fear of the unhoused puts us all in kind of a complicated space as a policymaking group. We shouldn't, and we can't, treat every fear, even people who really have fear, as the basis for public policy. Lots of people find clowns scary, right? But we can't pass ordinances against clowns. I mean, let's be honest. It's entirely possible that Norman would still be a sundown town if the fact that people were afraid of something allowed people to pass legislation. So we have to think about the legitimacy of certain kinds of fears. And I want to say two things about that. The first of which is, um, fear of the unhoused at a very minimum is overbroad. The idea that being unhoused in particular makes you a threat to someone isn't something that I think anybody in this room believes. They believe in-
Alice Luke. Alice Luke.
Hi, City Council. Thank you. I'm the Service Mayor. City Council, Brenda Darrell. I am Alice Luke, Ward four. Uh, our, I live in a block where seven of my neighbors have been vandalized by vagrants. And four have moved. Another one recently put their house up for sale because their fence was knocked down by a vagrant, unhoused person, homeless. And then he tried to break into my neighbor's husband's truck, and then also through a planter, through Don's locks. I've had a homeless person come up after I had a garage sale and say, "I know you have money, and you need to give me some." We've woke up, or not woke up, my, my husband went around to the back of the garage because the dogs were barking so much, and a vagrant, unhoused person was so doped, doped up, he was passed out behind our garage. Then the Norman police came out because another one was so doped up, he was passed out by the curb. The city of Norman will become, become enablers if we turn 718 North Porter into a low barrier of shelter. This is a low barrier of shelter. If you build it, they will come, making Norman an even bigger magnet for vagrants than the leniency with substance abusers already has. Norman allowing doped-up vagrants to wander about Norman is a danger to the vagrants and others in Norman. We've found one vagrant passed out behind our garage, another passed out by the curb, two vagrants smoking dope in the vacant lot. Next to us, at least seven neighbors and their neighbors have been vandalized by vagrants. The leading mental illness in America is substance abuse. There needs to be immediate state commit or stat for the chronic vagrants that are a danger to themselves in our community. Mandatory treatment like any other person suffering a mental illness crisis. If unable to receive treatment in Norman, transport to where they can receive treatment, just like COVID patients were. Build the city, states and counties that displaced persons came from. Let's get serious about this. Band-Aid solutions are why vagrancy is a crisis oozing all over Norman. I've had a neighbor with her car stolen Christmas weekend, the first year we moved here and left at a dope house. I've had another neighbor who had, woke up with someone, a vagrant asleep on her porch, and two other vagrants urinating on her bush. Another vagrant across, she has a security camera. Brenda, she called her quite frequently from 320 North Peters. She moved to Kansas. She had retired there for-
Alice, you're out of time. I'm sorry. No, it's not too bad.
No, I'm saying that, that 718-
Alice, you're done. There, you're out of time. I'm sorry.
I know. I'm saying that 718 North Porter-
You may not-
Is far where we live, and we weren't protecting our neighbors.
Please stop, Alice. That's it.
That's what we're saying. Stop encouraging-
Okay.
Bill Hutzel.
Bill Hutzel, Ward five. About two months ago, I received an insert in my water bill. It was a nice colored insert telling me not to blow my grass clippings into the street because of stormwater damage, or drainage. Three days later, I saw a city contractor mowing the islands on the divided road at Classen and Highway nine. They were blowing the clippings into the street. On any day, driving around Norman, you will see commercial lawn services mowing businesses' lawns and blowing the clippings into the street. I would think the city's code enforcement team could find these people instead of threatening the private citizens. Also, as a private citizen, if I have a dead tree on my property and I don't remove it, I can be fined. Yet on 12th Street from Robinson to Highway nine, there are far, there are four large dead trees along the street, several of which lean toward the road. In a strong storm, they could fall into the road causing prob- uh, uh, accidents. There are also about 10 small trees further south and need to be removed. Why hasn't the city removed these trees to be in compliance with their own ordinances? Also, on the city's website, we can pull up and look at the proposed 2024 budget for Norman, but not the final adopted version. It still shows the, uh, city manager's letter from April. Why hasn't the adopted budget been uploaded? I looked at it. I did notice that the police patrol division went from 90 full-time positions in 2023 to 79 full-time positions in, for 2024. Why are we- Why are we dropping patrol officer positions at the same time crime is rising? Doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Evan Dunn.
Oh, thank you, Council. Thank you, everybody watching at home. So what I've brought are some candles, and very special candles. You might even say that they have a mystical property. Why did I bring these? Well...
Thank you.
You know how important breathing is to me, right? Does anybody not have one? Mr. Grant? So I want you to look at these as some Christ's images. He's pointing to His heart, and His heart's glowing, right? Where's our heart? It's at our solar plexus, right? Now, the other one, see, His heart's still glowing, but His hands are in a different position. So if we start from our prayer position here, the next pose is here. Christ eventually comes to this crucifixion pose. Remember, His feet are nailed together. He's perfectly centered. And as He's crucified, He comes down from the cross, and it's this physiological balancing activity for Him. As He's opening, He's opening up His chest. He's breathing into His chest such that His intercostal muscles can support His body. This is the way that Christianity, I think, was galvanizing those early adherents. It was not only rituals and, you know, solar and harvesting rituals and kind of the celestial events that corresponded with those activities, but there was a physiological process that made it more resonant. And I think when we're talking about homelessness and these ideas that are very serious and have large ramifications, trying to remember what it's like to be like Christ, to not be a Christian, but to be even more, to remove the dogma and take into account what it is that His image is teaching us to do, to expand.
Evan? Time, sir.
You see what I'm saying? This is really simple. So thank you for listening.
Chelsea Gravel.
All right. I'm Chelsea Gravel from Ward 4. I'd like to talk to you about our Andrews Park here in Norman. It was constructed in 1890, and it's changed considerably over the years. The park was placed on the National Registry in 2000. We have many wonderful parks in Norman with so many wonderful resources. If you'd like to rent a pavilion to have a family gathering between mid-April and September, it's $30 per hour, but you have to do it for two hours with $100 refundable deposit. You should have access to restrooms throughout the park. You can also rent this from April to October. Little bit of a misconception on the website, but that's fine. If you arrive and there is individuals in this space, you are not allowed to ask them to leave. The space has to be cleaned between use, and our individuals in these pavilions will be given a 72-hour eviction notice to do so. However, according to our city attorney, this is not a place to get an eviction notice as it's not a residence. With all of the needles being found in our restrooms, anyone who has adopted a park who is sent to clean it has been told not to clean the park. Do not touch anything. Reach out to our police. Thankfully, our police station's next door if we need a bathroom, I suppose. Recently, I spoke with Lisa Craig about plans for the park as she was interviewing people to go over plans for her new idea for the park. She is requesting that the amphitheater get a permanent covering, that the splash pad be removed, and a water feature be put in. I ask that you do not do this. I ask that you permanently remove all features that will be housing individuals underneath them. I ask that you do not put in a pond that will be used as a bathing place. This burdens me deeply as I love our parks and spent my entire life being in our parks. However, is this really safe to be doing this to our beautiful parks whenever we can't even use them now? Appreciate you guys listening to me. Thank you so much. As we take care of our city together, this is very important moving forward. Thank you.
Carlinda Gravel.
Carlinda Gravel, Ward 4. Chelsea failed to mention that our police department has let us know it's not safe to visit our parks right now. So I decided, what am I supposed to tell you this week? How do I select what to tell you? It's been, I only have three minutes. What do I say? What do I limit this to? Do I tell you about the man who intimidated me when I left Boomer Express and followed my vehicle while he spread his arms out really wide, staring down at me like he was going to hurt me? Do I tell you about the person who had a blockade of shopping carts at 718 at the entrance while I left Tara Mahara's? I didn't know if they had a weapon. I didn't know if they were doing drugs or any kind of naughty things behind there that someone might jump out at me because I couldn't see even how many people were behind there. Do I tell you about Sooner Theater and how people had rammed aluminum cans up their downspout, and so the water can't drain off our city's roof at Sooner Theater properly? And we had to let them know that that was plugged up? And they told us that people are getting on their roof from another place nearby. There's defecation, urination, and trash up all over that roof, and they had to lock that trapdoor from the inside so people can't come in because they were coming inside on them. Do I tell you about what happened at the library when we had a meeting this weekend and a man wouldn't let us leave out of the elevator? He had no shoes on and was carrying a pipe. And when I spoke to the librarian, they told us they can't ask these people to leave because all H breaks loose. They have to ask for a police officer, and when a police officer comes, there's still an explosion. The lights are supposed to be on all the time. They're on a timer, but they're not. People are camping there. They're camping in their vehicles. We as property owners, I think there are some property owners in this city that would like to have campers in their yard. We are in the Citizens Committee. We're not allowed to have campers in our yard. We're not even allowed to have people live in an RV in our driveway. But our city allows campers to sleep in the parking lot at the library and at the depot, even though we are told not to approach these individuals for fear of being assaulted in case they're under the influence of drugs or alcohol or having a mental health crisis that could hurt us. So the list could go on. I don't probably need to go on. I'm sure you get the point. We need your help. We need you to protect us. I had a lady call me after a meeting that we had at the library this weekend. She said, "I'm elderly, and I'm scared to speak up because someone will see my face and they will hurt me." And she said to me, she said, "You are my hero. You are supposed to be her hero. You are supposed to be protecting her. You are supposed to be helping her, not me." But I am because this is important. We have to protect our citizens, especially the most vulnerable among us. We have to protect our business owners, our property owners. We have to support them. We have to protect this community, and I'm not saying not to do anything.
The last person on the list, Rola Weber. Okay. I think that person must have left, and that is all, Mayor.
All right. Well, the next item on the agenda is our favorite. We're adjourned.